Okay, the time is now 7:04. Can everybody please take your seats so we can start the proceedings? Please take your seats. All right, we're gonna start in 30 seconds while you're seated or not. Excuse me, Juan. Juan Fox, is this your jacket? All right, we're gonna start the proceedings. Good evening to everybody. Today's Monday, November 18th, and it's 7:06 PM. I called to order the 2024 Special Town Meeting of the Town of Stoughton. This meeting is now in session. This town meeting is being held in person at the Stoughton High School Auditorium. The address is 232 Pearl Street in Stoughton. This meeting is also being broadcast live and livestreamed through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand if you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, please be seated. All right, next, I'd like to introduce our town officials. To my right, we have the Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Steve Cavey. We have Vice Chair of the Select Board, Scott Carrera, and the members of the Select Board, Deborah Roberts, Luis Gito, and Joseph McCrisky. Is Joe McCrisky here? Nope, Mr. McCrisky's not here. We have our Town Manager, Tom Colter, our Assistant Town Manager, Mark Tisdale. We have our Town Council, Brian Winter, from the firm of Me, Talimor, and Costa. And we have Elizabeth Stilinski down here, our Finance Director. And sit in the Reserve Section, we have Catherine Weiss, our Chair of the Stoughton School Committee, Lindsey Creckler, Vice Chair of the Stoughton School Committee, and School Committee Members, Amando Barbosa, Karen Powers, and Chris Shannon. I don't know if Chris is here, but welcome, everybody. And we also have Dr. Joseph Baez, our Superintendent of Stoughton Schools, down here in front. To my left here, I have Susie Gross, our Town, from the Town Clerk's Office. I have our interim Town Clerk, Reggie Maderos Kowalskowski, if I got that right, or close enough. All right, and I have Samantha Regal, the Moderator's Assistant for this evening. I also have the Chair of the Finance Committee, Bonanocian, and the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, Dave Laurie. Welcome to all our officials, and welcome to all of you, the Town Meeting Reps and residents that are in the audience. Okay. Go ahead, give yourself a round of applause. All right, this time... I would like to... If John Anzavino is in the audience... John, why don't you come on down? I gotta ask Select Chair, Mr. Steve Cavey, to make a presentation to you, followed by Chair of the FinCon, Bonanocian. Mr. Cavey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Is this mic on? People, do you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anzavino. Coming over, my friend. So, before I read this, the town does have a proclamation for the time you've spent on the Finance Committee and other work you've done for the town. Before I read this, I do just wanna say that, on a very personal level, it's been an absolute honor to serve with you on town boards, committees, and to work with you through a lot of the issues the town has had to resolve. And as much as I'm grateful that you've been able to put in the full nine years, I personally am sad, was sad to see you go, and I'm looking forward to working with it in other capacities. But I wanted to sincerely thank you for all of your work for the town, and thank you very much, sir. In his own way, John has been a mentor to all of us, and I just wanted to honor him with a proclamation. So, the Town of Stoughton proclamation, be it proclaimed, whereas since 2007, John Anzavino has been a Town Meeting Representative for Precinct 4. And whereas, John Anzavino currently serves as the Chair of the Elementary School Building Independent Working Group. And whereas, in 2024, John Anzavino completed his nine years' service on the Stoughton Committee on Finance and Taxation, with three years serving as Vice Chair. And whereas, John Anzavino served two terms on the Stoughton Select Board, from 2008 to 2014, two as Vice Chair and one as Chair. And whereas, John Anzavino has committed a lifetime to working in the service of the Town of Stoughton, in areas ranging from youth sports to chief policymaker. Now therefore, we, Stephen M. Cavey, Scott D. Carrera, Deborah C. Roberts, Louis F. Gito, and Joe, Joseph M. McCrisky, in recognition of outstanding years of service to the Town of Stoughton, do hereby urge all citizens to join us, and others townwide, to thank John Anzavino. As witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Stoughton to be affixed on the 18th day of November 2024, for the Select Board, Stephen M. Cavey. Thank you very much, sir.
I'm never a man of few words. They shut him off.
I'm here as a stunt double for Congressman Lynch. A certificate of special congressional recognition presented to John Anzavino in recognition of your service to the Town of Stoughton as Town Meeting Representative, Chair of the Select Board, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and current Chair of the Elementary School Building Independent Working Group, dated November 18, 2024, signed by Congressman Stephen Lynch. I'd like to thank John for all his service and being a great friend to him.
Thank you, Congressman. We have a lot of business, so I'll make it very brief. I wanna thank my precinct and all the Finance Committee Members that I have worked with over the past nine years, and for Town Meeting putting up with me for all those years. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the things that you've done. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. John Anzavino, and congratulations again. Thanks. Next up, Select Board Member Deborah Roberts would like to read a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, all. Based on our recent annual town meeting, where we changed the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, the Select Board was invited to read the proclamation, our proclamation, our town's proclamation. Be it proclaimed, whereas during our 2024 annual town meeting, we voted to approve the holiday Christopher Columbus Day, name change to Indigenous Peoples' Day in the Town of Stoughton. Votes of approval, Article 54. And whereas, the Town of Stoughton has celebrated the Indigenous by hosting events and continuously acknowledging our historical connection and remembrance. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrates and honors the Indigenous peoples of Americas and commemorates their shared history and culture. And whereas, it began as a counter-celebration to honor Indigenous peoples in Americas who were nearly exterminated in the post-contact European conquest. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day was initiated in 1989 in South Dakota, where the governor backed a resolution to celebrate Native American Day on the second Monday of October. And whereas today, dozens of U.S. states, cities, and towns celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. In Massachusetts, 28 cities and towns have adopted Indigenous Peoples' Day. And whereas, let us not forget the importance of recognizing our factual history. The fact is, the Indigenous people should be recognized on this day. They are the original people of this land. Now therefore, we, Stephen M. Cavey, Scott D. Carrera, Louis F. Gito, Joseph M. McCrisky, and Deborah C. Roberts, members of the Select Board in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, have set forth the examples of service, honor, freedom, and democracy to do hereby present Indigenous Peoples' Day in the Town of Stoughton. And witness thereof, I have set unto my hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Stoughton to be affixed on this 14th day of October 2024, signed by our Chairman, Stephen M. Cavey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of moderators' comments. Just wanna mention about the use of email listing. We all have seen a lot of emails go around the last couple of days. Just remember, when you use the email listing from the Town Meeting Representative list, that's on the Town Clerk's webpage, not trying to curtail any of your First Amendment rights or anything, but just remember, I've seen emails go around using that email list talking about, you know, people running for office. I don't think that's proper, but it's not up to me to make that decision. It'd be up to the courts and probably Attorney General's Office, but, you know, obviously for any other issues or reasons, you can use a law. But just remember, don't be offensive or threatening or, you know, just try to be civil in your emails out there. I would appreciate it, because we're all part of the same community. And the other comment I'd like to make is just reminder for the use of the virtual table that's out there on the town's website, that it's reserved for specific documents related to the business contained in the Town Meeting warrant, which includes items like motions or amended motions, consent agendas, summaries for charts and articles, and backup article documentation. As you noticed when you came in through the, in front of the doors to the auditorium here, there was two tables. One table's for the moderators' documents, anything that's gonna be put on that table, the same thing that's pretty much for the virtual table. But then there's the other table, that's whatever you wanna put out there, as long as it's not offensive or derogatory to anybody. I think it's okay to put documents out there. Hopefully, it's related to Town Meeting, all right? Just wanna be clear on some of those things. Obviously, I'm not here to take away your First Amendment rights, but just wanna say, we're all here in the same community, we're all neighbors. After we're done with this Town Meeting, we all go back to when we lived in the same community. So, that's all I ask, let's be civil to each other, appreciate that. Now, going on to continue the business at hand, are there any Town Meeting Representatives that need to be sworn in or did not get sworn in? We believe everybody's been sworn in, all right? See, no one's raising their hand? Okay, let's move on. Now, we have to determine whether we have a quorum to proceed with both the, with the Special Town Meeting. I gotta call on the precinct chairs for the account of the members present in their precinct. Juan Fox, Precinct 1. 18, Precinct 1. George Stilinski, Precinct 2. 20, Precinct 2. Matt Callis, Precinct 3. 20, Precinct 3. Julie Gito, Precinct 4. 16, Precinct 4. Kamel Drews, Precinct 5. 14, Precinct 5. Bob Kirby, Precinct 6. 17, Precinct 6. Diane Doling, Precinct 7. 15, Precinct 7. David Sheehan, Precinct 8. 7, thank you, Pat, standing in for Dave Sheehan. 17, Precinct 8. All right, let's take a few minutes, give the clerks a chance to count up the tally. All right, there's 137 Town Meeting Reps present, and our quorum's considered 85. So, obviously, we have enough to proceed with our meeting this evening. Thank you all for showing this evening, coming to the meeting. All right, the first order of business, we will need to test our clickers. And remember, it's 1 for yes, 2 for no, 3 for abstain. You can press any number, 1, 2, or 3, that you desire. Are we ready? Test, go ahead. Vote, please. All right, please stand by, let's see if it tallies. Oh, let's give it a minute. Sorry, defer the Town Council? All right, let's give it a few minutes here, and we just had a little technical issue here. I think we might have to sit in precinct. I'm good, how about you? Obviously, we're gonna take a brief recess, so just be with us for a few minutes. Okay, we're gonna try again. Ready, Sam? All right, we're gonna test the clickers again. You ready, Sam? Please vote now, 1, 2, or 3. Looks good, looks good. All right, appears to be working. Thank you for that technical team there, we appreciate that. All right, we're gonna move on now. The clickers appear to be working. Thank you all for that test. We're gonna move into procedural motions. These are the motions that the moderator puts together, and we put them on the virtual table, and also copies, hard copies are on the table as you proceed to come into the auditorium. We're gonna do voice votes on these. I'm just waiting for the microphone to clear. All right, Kamel Drews, she's gonna read out each motion one at a time, and then I'll ask for a voice vote, yea or nay or abstain on each one. Go ahead, Kamel, motion 1. Kamel is our Deputy Moderator, by the way.
All right. Motion number 1, move to dispense with reading of the warrant and the return thereof.
Is there a second?
Carolyn.
Second by who? Peter Murphy? All right, by voice vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none? Declare that a vote. Article, excuse me, motion number 2, Kamel.
Move to act on the articles as printed in the Town Warrant.
Is there a second? Is that Peter Murphy again? Lester Davis will take, thank you. I can't hear where it's coming from up here. Okay, it was seconded by Lester Davis. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none? Declare that a vote, that passes. Motion number 3, please.
Move that on matters of substitute motions, that the original motion is moved and seconded and put on the floor before a substitute motion is made, except for clerical or typographical corrections.
Seconded by Eric Coleman. All right, by voice vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? I hear a couple. And any abstentions? I declare that that motion passes by voice vote. All right, number 4.
Move that amendments or substitute motions per an article be only in writing, and further, that any proposed new motion or substitute motion or complex amendments be delivered in writing to the Town Moderator 48 hours in advance of the session at which the motion is to be made. Motions to be emailed to the Town Moderator at b-mullin@stoughtonma.gov, and a copy to the interim Town Clerk at reggie@stoughton-ma.gov.
Is there a second? Second by Carolyn Campbell. By voice vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? I hear 1, no. Any abstentions? I declare that motion passes. Number 5.
Move that no reconsideration of any article take place until the last article has been completed at Town Meeting.
Is there a second? Who seconded that? Peter Ventresco? By voice vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? I hear 1 over here. I declare that motion passes by voice vote. Number 6.
Move that Town Meeting does not take up any new business after 10:30 PM.
Seconded by who? Paul Camus? By voice vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? I hear 1 over here. Any abstentions? Hearing none? I declare that a vote, passing motion by voice vote. All right, thank you, Kamel. Next up is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda helps us to move the meeting along. What the moderator did was take several motions, in this case, 3 motions, that hopefully will pass. They generally pass every time we have them on the agenda, or motions similar to that. And why take up the time of the Town Meeting to just, you know, these are routine type of motions? So, Kamel, can I have a motion?
Proposed motion, move to accept Consent Agenda 1 as written and approve Special Town Meeting Articles 2, 6, and 12.
Is there a second? Seconded by who? Carolyn Campbell. Now, if anybody wants to hold the motion, please say hold and give me the motion number, and then we'll just wait until it comes up in the book. Okay, I'll give you another second. Hearing none? We hear the second, by voice vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I declare that unanimous vote on that. Thank you very much, Kamel Drews. All right. Now, we're ready to move on to the warrant book, Article 1, and that appears on page 11. Let me just give you a recap and a summary of process. I'm sure it'll have to remind everybody who've been here prior to Town Meetings. When the motion is read, either by the Finance Committee Chair or someone from the town, there'll be a second, the Standing Committee reports are read, they're all in the book. Then we have the presenter of the article, they have up to 10 minutes to present the article. Obviously, less is more, they can do it less than 10 minutes. I'll rep, I'll hear you in 1 minute, Cynthia. I'll get right to you. Then followed by the technical question period, if any, 2 questions per a Town Meeting Rep, but the moderator does, if needed, I will reduce that if time gets lengthy as we go along. Then that's followed by pro and con debate. Each Town Meeting Rep has up to 3 minutes to provide their pro and con comments, followed by an article summary by the presenter, and then we vote. I recognize Cynthia Walsh. Go ahead.
On your previous vote, Article 2 is not unpaid bills, that's Article 3. Article 2 is a supplemental budget.
Did I make a mistake on that?
Heaven forbid.
Even the moderator makes mistakes, I'm sorry.
Well, teachers point out errors.
Thank you. That was a typo, so that's Article 3, unpaid bills. Anybody have a problem for you? We make that? We wanna revote that? Do we have to revote that? The whole Consent Agenda? Yeah, we're gonna revote the whole Consent Agenda. Kamel, can I have you make that motion?
Absolutely. Proposed motion, move to accept Consent Agenda 1 as written and approve Special Town Meeting Articles 3, 6, and 12.
Okay, is there a second? Carolyn Campbell, this, let me just point out, Article 3 is unpaid bills. Article 6 is National Grid easement located on Town Home Apostle, map 61, Lot 59. And Article 12 is the FAA lease agreement. Everybody with me on those? Okay, the motion's been made and seconded by Carolyn Campbell. By voice vote again, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? You wanna hold 6? We have a hold on 6. So, the motion will be on Article 3 and Article 12. Okay, we'll take up 6 in the, in the matter of the book as it's in sequence there. So, this motion, again, let's remake the motion, Kamel, please.
Proposed motion, move to accept Consent Agenda 1 as written and approve Special Town Meeting Articles 3 and 12.
Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Okay, again, by voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. Is there a problem? Wait a minute. First, Mr. Cohen, please rise and use a microphone. We had an opportunity to say hold. Do you wanna hold it? Now's the time to say hold. What? You have to use the microphone, sir. What article do you wanna hold?
I'm Bob Cohen from Precinct 5. I'd like to question. Article 3, it's a small amount of money, but I'd like, it's not even, what is it for?
Well, we'll get to that when we get to that in the book, but we're taking it out, the way the consent, all the towns do this, just to speed up the process. Don't be frustrated, it's just that, you know, we're gonna hold Article 3, and we're gonna hold Article 6, so. It's all 3, right? Well, we might as well just proceed along in the book then. Okay, well, other towns use Consent Agendas, it's just the routine matters, but, you know, we'll do it the way this body wants to do it, I'm okay with that. All right. So, the Consent Agenda is kinda blown apart, we'll forget about the Consent Agenda. We don't have a Consent Agenda right now that's working. We don't have a consent agenda right now that's working. All right. Do we have to do any of that? No. Yep, it's all on hold. All right, so let's proceed to page eleven. We'll take up, you know, I don't mind. I mean, we'll just do it the way the body wants. Article One, sunset bylaw amendment on page eleven. I'll give everybody a chance to get there. All right, if I could have the maker of motion, of the motion, Mr. Steve Cavey.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article One and amend the town's general bylaws as printed in the warrant, and further, that the town clerk be authorized to make clerical, editorial, and other adjustments to effectuate the purpose thereof.
Second. Is that Mr. Gito? Okay, thank you. Seconded by Lou Gito for the record. All right, we need the finance committee report, please. Mr. Von Anokian.
Recommend the town meeting Article One as written in the warrant. Would you like me to read that again, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
Finance committee voted nine to four to one to accept and recommend the town meeting Article One as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Municipal Regulations, Kamel Druze, would you be able to read that for us?
Municipal Regulations voted nine to zero to recommend Article One to town meeting for approval.
Okay, thank you. Presentation, Mark Tisdale. Are you doing that one or? Ryan, are you doing this one? Town Council? Sure. His microphone doesn't seem to be. There it is, it's green though.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the meeting, I'll try to give the meeting a summary of what's happened since the last annual town meeting when this was voted. So as you may recall, at the last town meeting, we had to make a number of amendments because the sunset bylaw that passed previous to that had some unintended consequences, some municipal finance gaps that hadn't been addressed. So we had to make a number of accommodations, excuse me, for all the financial articles that were before town meeting the last time. So after that meeting, your finance director and myself worked with Mr. Peter Murphy, and I want to thank Mr. Murphy for coming to town hall several times and sitting down with us and working through this sunset bylaw. This was originally his idea. He had brought it to town meeting several times previously, and most recently, he had proposed it as a bylaw, and that's how it got adopted by this meeting. What we did between the last town meeting and this one was work with Mr. Murphy and some of our other financial professionals at town hall to fill some of those gaps, those unintended consequences. And so what you have here to vote on tonight honors the spirit and the intent and the mechanical aspects of the sunset bylaw that Mr. Murphy had already had passed by this meeting. But it just closes a few of the gaps that he couldn't have possibly have foreseen the first time. And so this is recast as a formal bylaw. You'll see it has, you know, chapter and section numbers to slide into the Stoughton Code. It has some more nuances and technical details in it for how to address certain municipal finance components. But in terms of the nuts and bolts, it works exactly the same way. Some of the things that we encountered in the last version of this bylaw had to do with borrowing and appropriations and some of the outside financial groups that we work with, lenders, et cetera, who had some concerns and questions, and it created a little bit of chaos that we didn't foresee. And so we've now fixed that. And so with this bylaw, we won't have those problems anymore, and we'll have a fresh start. This wipes the slate clean and allows us to begin with a new sunset bylaw that'll do exactly the thing Peter Murphy intended it to do, but it won't create any of the problems with our outside financial teams. And so that's what this does in a nutshell. So, Mr. Moderator, I'll turn it back to you, and there may be some other comments from others here that may have a thing or two to say, and Mr. Murphy may want to have a comment as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Town Council. All right, this time, Mr. Murphy, I would give you, where are you, over here? Would you like to add a little bit to the presentation?
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. As the previous speaker mentioned, yes. This keeps the same essence that this bylaw was designed to do. And what it does is, it frees up a lot of money that's been sitting on the books. And you've seen that during various town meetings. How much money has been just sitting there in either A, not doing anything for the town, or B, we're paying interest on money that's just sitting there? So the intent of this, again, is in the, it's the proper approach to this. Now, what happens is, working with town council, working with town manager, working with the, with Biz. Thank you. We went and it went through barn council and everything else. So both times, and this is the third time. The first time, it didn't have the word bylaw. Last time, it had the word bylaw, but it was missing a few things else. But now, it has everything that satisfies and makes everybody on the town side happy. I thank you for all your support and patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I just received a little notice here. If someone has a Camry, their plate number is eight-nine-two, M is a Mary, G is a George, B is a Bob. Your lights are on. If there's anybody's in this room, you can sneak out the side door if you want to turn the lights off. If not, we're gonna just proceed. All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next up is technical questions. Anybody have a technical question? Please rise, identify yourself, and ask your technical question, please.
Hey boss, thank you, good timing.
Go ahead, please identify yourself, please. Wait a minute, the microphone's gotta be on. Are we good? There you go.
Juan Fox, Precinct One. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Chair, the FinCom Chair. There was four no votes against that. I'm curious as to why that was, there were no votes for this.
Can anybody answer that?
The question is, why did people vote no?
It was not unanimous. It was nine-four-one. And I was curious as to why four people voted no for this.
I don't know their personal reasons why they voted no. They didn't tell me why they were voting no.
Okay.
If they're here, they could answer that. I don't, everyone votes for whatever they want.
Okay, that was asked and answered. Anybody else with technical questions on this article?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I think I might be able to help a little bit.
Did you vote no?
We didn't take a roll call vote, but I did have some concerns about the article, so I'll express those. So some of the language, even in the original, allowed the petitioner to put language in to just say, "Don't worry about it, because as long as you put the exception in, you're exempt from the bylaw." And it was just like, became almost like boilerplate. You just drop that phrase at the bottom of every article, and it kind of breaks the spirit of why you would actually have a bylaw. That's one of the things. And in terms of like, the concern about long projects that go longer than three years, I think it could have been truncated where small projects up to three, longer projects up to five. I think it could have been truncated to accommodate that. So I'm just sharing some of the things that I said during the public hearings on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Catherine, go ahead, please identify yourself.
No, I got it. Catherine Weiss, Precinct Four. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to whomever can answer the question. On page twelve, Section forty-three-five, under Exceptions. Just a question about the specific definition of the word, "All funding for articles not spent." Does spent mean, meant, excuse me, does spent mean bill paid or the funds have been encumbered?
Can anybody answer that for a while?
Mr. Moderator, to the body, Elizabeth Zaleski, Finance Director. The intention of the article is for spent, not just encumbered. It's not just blowing a purchase order.
Okay, thank you both. Anybody else with technical questions? All right, seeing them, we're gonna move on. All right, next up is pro and con debate. Anybody have any comments? Seeing none? Does the presenter like to do a summary? Mr. Town Council, you want to summarize or you're good? Okay, no summary needed. All right, we're gonna go ahead and proceed to vote. Are we ready? Okay, please vote now. One, two, or three. Yes, no, or abstain. All right, the motion passes. One twenty-five, yes, six no, two abstentions. Let's move on. Next up is on page.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Murphy.
Point and privilege. I want to thank the group here for supporting this again. I also want to thank town council, Biz, and our town manager. Thanks.
All right, Article Two, FY twenty-five supplemental budget appears on page fourteen. All right, for the motion, Mr. Von Anokian, when you're ready.
That the town vote to appropriate three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars to supplement the FY twenty-twenty-five operating budget, and to meeting this appropriation, that such funds be transferred from the final cherry sheet that was approved by the conference committee in August of twenty-twenty-four, with a net increase in state aid of two sixty-two, nine sixteen, and local receipts of one hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second? Who wants to take Carolyn Campbell? Thank you very much for the record. All right, for the presentation, Finance Director Elizabeth Zaleski.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. From you to the body, Elizabeth Zaleski, Finance Director. What occurred is, you have a supplemental budget. We're gonna start with the easy part first. So during this year, our internal auditor submitted her resignation. And there was a need, if you look in the book and in the handout that went out earlier, submitted her resignation. So after much consideration, we felt as though the position should now be a staff accountant and not an internal auditor. So from the town manager's line, we are moving one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars into the town accountant finance department line to cover the assistant town accountant salaries, the staff accountant salary, and also the annual audit fee. The annual audit fee was underbudgeted by four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. So those transfers as a level of transparency is a net zero to the budget. The next part is our Norfolk County retirement system. When the budgets were done, we had an original figure of eight million, fifty-five thousand. However, when the bill came in, it actually is coming in at three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three seventy-nine, four oh two, higher. And so in order for us to pay the retirement, which we are required to do by law, we did need to do a supplemental budget. There is no increases to taxation whatsoever. The revenue aspects pretty much come from the cherry sheet. We budgeted the twenty-five cherry sheet at a net of twenty-eight million, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight. After cherry sheet assessments are brought into play and gross cherry sheet, we had two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine sixteen that we could allocate to the shortfall. And then with local receipts, local receipts, when we present our budgets, we're presenting estimated revenue, and revenue is estimated. It is chronically changing, especially when we get down to the final tax rate recap, which is approved by the Department of Revenue. We did have local estimated receipts that we could put a slight increase into the, into, I believe it was the interest income, because our interest income was substantial. So with doing that, we have to look at the twenty-four data in order to do our estimated revenues for twenty-five. So it's a break even. There's really very little, if any, impact, and it comes from local receipts, not from general taxation.
Thank you, Biz. All right, time for technical questions. Anybody? You have to use the microphone, please. Oh, did I miss the step there?
Would you like me to read the?
Yeah, would you please? I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
Finance committee voted twelve to one, to one, to accept and recommend to town meeting Article Two as written in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Von Anokian. Thank you, John, appreciate that. All right, time for technical questions. Anybody? Please identify yourself, please, Lisa. She's over here, Kevin.
Hi. Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. So I'm just a little concerned about this article. One, on one hand, with regard to the retirement of an internal auditor, I just feel that that's immensely critical for a town of our size to have an internal auditor. So for that to position to be vacant, given all the concerns that we've heard at finance committee meeting that the books have been in, as to why we wouldn't have an internal auditor.
Would anybody be able to answer that?
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Yes.
To the ladies' concerns. Our concerns are not the internal auditing on how money is being spent. That is strictly controlled. The guardrails are strong. The policies are clear. What we do have a concern about is the way the books have been closed for the past two decades. They are incomplete in terms of how they've been closed. Therefore, it was the opinion of our chief financial officer that that money, that salary, is better used in accounting as opposed to auditing. We have not had a single incidence of mismanagement of funds. We've got numerous instances over the past two decades of very inferior accounting. Therefore, transferring that salary from auditing into accounting. I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter.
I have one more question, if I may.
One last question, go ahead.
Okay, and the second question is, I just find that answer hard to believe because we don't have fiscal policies in place here. And I am also concerned, as evidenced that the town manager's budget had all that money to move into another department, that means that we're over-budgeting.
Excuse me, is there a question coming?
Yep, so my question is, auditors can pick up on things like that Yep, so my question is, auditors can pick up on things like that and bring it to the attention of Town, bring it to the attention of Town Meeting, so that we can pay more attention to that.
Mr. Moderator, brief response.
Yes.
We do have an external auditor who's outstanding, and I know that the speaker does not understand the fiscal policies, but they do exist. They're in the guidelines that the Select Board gave this team to do the budget this year. They're crystal clear. That a speaker may not be aware of them does not mean they don't exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Thank you both. All right, anybody else with technical questions? Please identify yourself.
Arnie Feinberg, Precinct Six. Mr. Coulter, if they're available, are they online and where are they?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I believe the guidelines voted on by our Select Board for this fiscal year, excuse me, are online. If they're not, we can give them to you tonight and post them this evening. Those guidelines provide very clear guidance for the town and the schools with respect to the amount of increase in this year's budget, the non-use of free cash. Remember, this body gave a seven-year plan to get free cash out of the budget? This coming budget, there's no free cash in the budget. Those, my friends, are called financial controls. There's information there about deposits to the stabilization fund. There's information in there about zero new full-time employees. When we give our presentation to the FinCon in February, you will see those guidelines, and you'll see that we've met those guidelines. I do appreciate the question.
Thank you. Thank you. Just in the future, as we go forward, please address your questions to the moderator, and we'll find out who should answer that question. Thank you very much. Any other technical questions? All right, seeing none. Pro and con debate. Anybody have any comments on the debate?
Hi. So I-
Identify yourself again.
Sure, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. So I think this is imperative, because we, as the Select Board, last year chose, made a verbal policy that we wouldn't use free cash, and we ended up using $675,000 of free cash in the operating budget last year. So there's no, there's not enough guardrails in place with regard to debt inside the budget, with regard to incoming revenue. These are the type of policies, if we get, if the Select Board gets these policies in place, which we've been warned time and time again that we need to have best practices, then we could, it's solely on the Select Board. Mr. Kaby told me we would be, those would be forthcoming, and I have yet to see them out of the Select Board, because that, the lack of those kind of policies is creating a lot of dissension in Town over capital projects. And if we had those policies in place, especially as savings, that could go a long way to reducing the chaos and dissension in this Town over capital projects. And that's what I have to say on pro and con debate. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'll be seated. I thought there was gonna be a question, but I didn't hear one.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're in pro and con debate now, so. They have a, you know, anybody else? Carolyn Campbell, go ahead. Please identify yourself.
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. I'm not really sure if financial policies or presence or their presence are going to eliminate any debate over capital project spending in this Town. I would like to say, one of the previous speakers made the comment that, you know, about policies about free cash, but that the budget last year contained amount like $600 and something thousand dollars from free cash. I'd just like to remind the previous speaker that it's neither the Select Board nor the School Committee, but it's Town Meeting that votes the budget. So whatever policies the Select Board can have on Town Meeting, they are not binding on this body. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pro and con debate? All right, we're getting there, hang on, okay. Okay, let me ask if there's a, Biz, would you want to summarize?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna proceed to the vote. Are we ready to vote? Up on the screen, please vote now, one, two, or three. All right, Article Two, motion passes, 115 yes, 19 no, one abstention. Thank you all. Okay, we're moving on. Next up is Article Three, and that is on page 14. Unpaid bill, excuse me, Article Three, page 16. Unpaid bills, I'm sorry. Yes, unpaid bills. Simple majority. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify, Article Three, it takes nine tenths to pass this, because it's a special Town Meeting, so it's a nine-tenths vote, just for your information. All right. Can I have a motion on this? This will be by Finance Committee, Von Anokian.
That the town vote to appropriate the amount of $756.86 and authorize the payment of unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year in the amount of $756.86 to Verizon for various bills related to data transmission lines from the current year DPW budget.
Second, who's second in that?
Elliot did.
Elliot Hanson, seconded by Elliot. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. All right, can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 14 to 0 to 0 to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article Three as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Okay, the presenter will be Biz, Finance Director, I believe.
As far as presenting the motion, the detail behind it, we're gonna defer to the DPW Director.
Oh, I'm scared. On the unpaid bills? Okay, thank you. Please identify yourself.
Sure. Paul Jafro, Public Works. These are communications bills that are for our water and sewer station reporting SCADA system. Any issues or monitoring of the system, we get alerts from them, and we're gonna pay those bills. The bills were previously going via email to an employee or employees who no longer work here. We've since changed that procedure and have them going straight to the main office from here on out.
All set. Paul? Thank you very much, Paul. All right, now we're at the technical questions. Any technical questions? Mr. Murphy, please rise and identify yourself.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. The question I have is, these are critical information lines, and if Verizon were to say, you haven't paid your bill in two years, we're gonna shut you off, how would we know that those lines of communication have dropped out?
Would anybody be able to answer him on that? Biz?
If I may. We will get information from Verizon or any other department that we owe bills on, and we have worked, we did have a number of issues, we have worked with vendors to ensure that the accounts stay open and are not deactivated until things are rectified. So that's a standard operating procedure that we deal with.
Now, the, to follow up on that-
That, this is gonna be your second question?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
The Verizon, I'm sure, issues telephones, cell phones to employees within the department. So it's the same thing if an employee was to be, leave, hit the lottery and leave. What terminates their phone, so we're not paying on those anymore?
Well, this is not related to cell phones, and we have centralized purchasing, which audits all of our cell phones to ensure that the cell phones are being paid, and anything that's inactive becomes inactive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both. Anybody else for technical questions? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Pro and con debate, anybody? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Shwam, would you like to do a summary? It's up to you. No summary needed. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna proceed to vote. Are we ready? Please vote now, one, two, or three. That's yes, no, or abstain. This is nine-tenths vote, nine-tenths needed. And the counselor is gonna do the math? Ninety percent, okay. Thank you. He assured me it's ninety percent for the math calculations. How we doing here? All right. Okay, that's clearly nine-tenths vote passes. Article Three passes, 130 yes, two no, zero abstentions. All right, let's move on to Article Four. This will be Mr. Kaby. We have a motion to dismiss, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that we dismiss Article Four.
Seconded by Scott Carrara. On a voice vote, as long as there's no objections, motion to dismiss Article Four, combined water and sewer enterprise accounts. All those in favor by voice, say aye. All those oppose? Any abstentions? I declare that unanimous vote. Article Four is now hereby dismissed. All right, we're gonna move on to Article Five. That should be on page 17, Page Street, discontinuance easements. And Mr. Kaby, can I have a motion by you, please, when you're ready?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to accept and authorize and direct the Select Board to execute and deliver the easement described as printed in Article Five in Paragraphs One, Two, and Three, each from Ivy Three Stoughton Logistics Park, LLC, and are from Stephen O'Dougan, trustee of the 126 Old Page Realty Trust, and further to accept the discontinuance by the Norfolk County Commissioners of that approximately 6,751 square foot portion of the property, subject to the October 22, 1872 county layout of Page Street, and to authorize and direct the Select Board to dedicate that portion as a townway as described and printed in Article Five in Paragraph Three.
Seconded by Elliot Hanson. Can I have the Municipal Operations Report? Cynthia Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three, Chair of Municipal Operations. The committee voted five to zero to recommend Article Five to Town Meeting for approval.
Thank you very much. Now it's time for the presentation. Assistant Town Manager, please identify yourself. When you're ready.
Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager. First, I want to thank you everybody for coming out tonight. It really means a lot. Appreciate it. This article is the Page Street Discontinuance, pretty much a housekeeping item. There's roads in Town that are county roads, there's roads in Town that are public roads, and there's roads in Town that are private roads, three types of roads. There's a, the county discontinued a portion of one of the county roads under their control. In its place, there are some town utilities underneath that right-of-way that require an easement, and that's what this article accomplishment, accomplishes. It creates easements where the road was discontinued.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Tisdale. Okay, time for technical questions. Anybody have any technical questions? Seeing none. Let's move on to pro and con debate. Anybody have any pro and con debate? Seeing none. Mark, would you like to do a summary? None? All right, thank you. No summary is needed. All right, are we ready to move on to vote? Okay, let's vote now. One, two, or three. I'm sorry, it's two-thirds, two-thirds vote. It's acquiring property, is that what it is? All right, Article Five passes by a clear two-thirds, 129 yes, two no, one abstentions. Thank you all for voting. Let's move on to Article Six. That appears on page 19 in your books. I'll give you a moment to turn to that page. We having some problems with clickers. Are we okay with the clickers? Okay, thank you. All right, we're on page 19, Article Six. National Grid easement located on Town Own Apostle, map 61, Lot 59. Mr. Kaby, can you make the motion when you're ready, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Elliot Hanson. Presentation by Mr. Mark Tisdale.
Good evening, Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager. Again, this is a, an easement, another easement article from National Grid.
Mark, excuse me, I apologize. Can we have Intergovernmental Relations Report would come out? Could you read that report for us, if you're all right to read that? Apologize, Mark.
Article Six, correct?
Yes, Article Six.
All right. Intergovernmental Relations voted five to zero to recommend Article Six to Town Meeting for approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to you, Mark.
All right, thank you. No problem. Again, this is another easement article from National Grid to create, to actually revise an easement that's on one of our apostles where our pump station is, off Atkinson Avenue. It's a sewage pump station. It just revises the language to an existing easement, just to add language for another line going, connecting to the transformer that's on that easement. And that's as simple as the article is.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. All right, time for the technical question period. Anybody for technical questions? Mr. Scott Carrara, please identify yourself.
Scott Carrara, Precinct Two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Town Engineer. When they put in this, I looked, the map was so-so, but where's our piping from that pump station go? Are they gonna cross it with this electric easement?
Thank you, Scott. The piping for the sewage pump station actually goes out into Atkinson Avenue. Goes into the road.
It doesn't go up to Lucas?
Your question was, the piping that comes into the pump station, where does it come from? It comes from Atkinson Avenue.
Into that pump station, and that goes up Lucas?
It goes up, exactly.
Right. But this easement is not gonna go across any of that piping, right?
This is an easement that's already on the pump station apostle.
This easement is to give power to the new apartment complex.
Correct.
Right. That's why I don't understand why National Grid's getting involved in asking us to hand over an easement to a private contractor over 200 plus or minus feet, when this building borders 138, and then 88 feet, he could have his own pedestal without us granting this easement, having anything on our apostle whatsoever. I find this a problem. If this building shuts, and they use a lot of power, and that station, that pedestal there goes out, that station's down. I don't know why we're getting involved in supplying a private enterprise with a non-binary, no money whatsoever. We're getting, we're like using National Grid as the intermediate, and then the windfall is on the other side of the property line. This is- This is the first time I've seen this in this town done this way. Every other contractor's been told to secure their own power to their own property. This is ridiculous. We're bearing all the burden on this. I want everybody to understand that. That you don't have to run 200 plus or minus feet that he could get it from 138 in a shorter distance.
I was just kind of referring back.
That's all. I'm appealing to Mark's knowledge.
Do you have a question in this, Scott?
That's the question. Why? Why are we going to this extent for a private contractor?
Okay, maybe we can, we have that answered?
Again, just to reiterate, this is a petition from National Grid. Like Scott said, there's a couple hundred feet of an underground electric line, but there would also be several hundred feet of overhead utilities, utility poles. Again, I can't give you the answer to that question, but from a town reliability standpoint, you know, if there's 33 units in that building, National Grid may, again, I emphasize "may", may have considered that it's better to go underground to a transformer that's in place through an easement they already have versus running, you know, four or five utility poles up the street and having wires hanging. I don't know. That's just, again, an assumption from my standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Mr. Starr, please identify yourself.
6. Edward Starr, Precinct 6. Is there a reason why it's a hidden estimate on this project? Anyone? Is there a question on why there was no estimate on this project?
There's no cost to the town on this.
Oh, no cost on this? Okay. That's my question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Starr. Thank you, Ms. Tisdale. Next up is Peter Vindresko. Please identify.
Peter Vindresko, Precinct A. I agree with the gentleman that just finished. It doesn't make sense for a private company hooking into a Towne Stoughton electrical box. And I agree, something could happen. Pump station goes down, there you got sewage all over the place. But also, this pad that they're putting in, Pad 3-1, it's a lot closer to 138. Why isn't it coming off 138? Why we running this long distance? It's a longer distance what they're doing. It's a shorter distance from that pad to, the new pad to 138. That's my question.
Again, I didn't analyze the exact linear footage, but ballpocketing it, it's a much longer distance running overhead utilities to 138 than going from that pad to the other pad. I don't know the exact number difference, but it is longer going to 138.
Well, I was up there today. It's a shorter distance. That's all I got to say. I think it's a bad idea for us letting a private developer hook into...
Is there a question?
Well, I'm going back to the same question. We're looking for trouble down the line. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, she's gonna add your name to the list. Next up is Lisa Lyons. Please identify yourself.
Yep, hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. So, hi, Mark. Thank you. So, I am concerned that we're not taking heed from Mr. Carrara because I heard him speaking at the select board on this issue. And National Grid could run that, the wires or cables, whatever it's called, underground to 138. It's not definitive that they would go above ground and it's more plausible that they're gonna go underground to 138 if we don't give them this easement. It's not like that apartment building is not going to get their electricity, but to risk our residents losing power and it involving our residents, I would be cautious as to have, the question is for you, Mr. Moderator. Have you asked National Grid, instead of taking an easement from us, can you just run it the shorter distance to 138? That's my question. Thank you.
Again, this is a petition from National Grid, so I didn't ask their options. I do know, I mean, I'm not an electrical engineer, but I do know they analyze reliability statistics and things like that. So, going from this spot to a shorter spot, which would be the other transformer, that's a shorter distance, so there's less issues with underground line than going a longer distance, either underground or overhead, to 138. So, they look at those options, they say, well, it's better to go a shorter distance either way.
I'm just concerned because time and time again, the taxpayers of Stoughton have taken the brunt of just following what's put before them.
No cross debate. If you have another question, please ask.
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Alright, next up is Peter Murphy. Please identify yourself.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. I see existing Pad 3-2. There's 150 kVA coming into it. So, I'm sure when that was put in for the town to do the pumping station, they sized the wires accordingly for that transformer. Now you're adding 750 kVA, not you, but ever so. And my question, going back to the first pad, the source coming to that station, are those wires gonna be heavy enough to cover that additional load? And if it's not, it's gonna, well, save that for comments.
Okay, could anybody answer that?
Yes, that's a question outside my expertise. I always like answering questions that I understand. I'm not an electrical engineer, so I can't answer that question.
Okay.
My question 2 would be hypothetically, if this was to be voted down tonight, what's the impact on this project going forward?
I guess there would be the other option. They would have to go forward with the utility pole option.
Thank you. Okay, thank you both. Next up, Mr. Inzavino, please identify yourself.
John Inzavino, Precinct 4. The previous speaker brought up one point. The new, you know, the new transformer's five times the size of the existing one. My question is, is the existing transformer strictly for that pumping station?
My understanding is yes.
Okay. And I am an electrical engineer and I'm kind of concerned at whatever is feeding that first transformer. And obviously, it would have to be sized to carry the load. If they're just continuing, you know, tapping onto that transformer, how are they separating those feeds? Because, I mean, if you had a problem here, you could take out the pump station. And without really seeing diagrams on how they're doing this, I'd be concerned with how these connections are being made to isolate the two. So, I'm just bringing that up. That's my question. I would like to know how they would be isolating them. And, you know, this is what I do for a living, so I'm kind of concerned with how they would be doing.
Alright, can anybody like to take that question?
Listen, I must stay consistent with my response. I'm up here talking about easements because I'm the most logical person to talk about that. When it comes to electrical, you know, calculations and things like that, did take a couple college classes, but that's my expertise on it, so.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other technical questions? Mr. Kirby, please identify yourself.
Robert Kirby, Precinct 6. My question is, is it possible to us vote to put a hold on this until we got some answers? Perhaps someone from National Grid could come and explain their rationale and we table this until Wednesday night.
What do you think, Mr. Counselor? Let me defer the counsel on that. Deferring?
That's a motion to lay it on the table. That's a proper motion.
Would you like to? Counselor said, if you want to make a motion to lay it on the table, that would be, that would be proper.
I would like to make a motion to hold this till Wednesday night and seek counsel from National Grid in explaining their rationale.
Is it simple majority? Alright, who's second in that for the record? Elliot Hanson for the record. Do we have that for the record? Alright, this is gonna be simple majority, to hold it till Wednesday? Is that what the motion was? November 20th? No discussion? Is there a discussion on that motion? No discussion on that motion? Well, we're gonna have Wednesday night now. Alright, so a motion's been made, seconded by Mr. Elliot Hanson to table this Article 6 till Wednesday night. All those, by voice vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All oppose?
No.
Okay, there is doubt in the moderator. Why don't we have a standing count? No, it's gonna be, hang on, just hold on a minute. I'm gonna see what the options are here. Alright, can we do something on this? Okay, just take a moment. We're gonna set it up on the screen. To take, to, and actually, it's a 2/3's vote required. The council just checked. Right, we still have to take the vote in a minute here. When it gets set up, this will be a motion to lay it on the table till Wednesday night. Takes a 2/3's vote to lay it on the table. Lay this article, postpone the article till Wednesday evening. Yeah, it says 2/3 right there. That should be right on the speed dial. Do you have an apple watch? I know, but... Are we ready? Alright, we're ready to vote. Please pay attention. We're ready to vote. 2/3's required. Please vote now. This is to lay it on the table till Wednesday evening. Alright, that motion to lay it on the table fails. Did not get a 2/3's majority on that. So, let's continue discussing Article 6. We're still in the technical question period. Anybody else with technical questions? Alright, do you want, please identify yourself? Just wait for the microphone to get turned on.
Peter Vindresko, Precinct A.
Oh, hang on a second, Peter. We have someone up for us.
Cheryl Iverson, Precinct 1. It's more of a clerical question. Should it say that the select board is gonna grant an easement to National Grid, not from them? In the wording of the article?
Well, let me defer the Town Council.
It would be fixed. It'd be fine.
Can I have Town Council weighing on that through your microphone?
So, I would, Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, the difference would be whether to receive and accept or to grant. And in this case, where they're granting it, you're right, the better language would be to grant to someone. It's more proper, but in this case, it's a grant. So, it's, I think the intent of the article is clear that we're granting something to them, not receiving something from them.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Mr. Vindresko, you were up before.
Yes, my one and only question.
Well, let me ask before I grant you permission to speak again. Anybody else have a technical question that has not asked a technical question? Okay, Mr. Vindresko, I'll recognize you.
Why wasn't this all straightened out before the permit was granted to put the building up? That's all I got to say.
Can anybody answer that one?
I missed the question.
Okay, one more time, Peter. Peter, excuse me? Can you re-ask? Well, please, hold on a minute, please. Mr. Vindresko has a question.
Seemed like the wagon was put in front of the horse. Why wouldn't this straighten away with the permits before the permit was granted to put the building up? You hear?
Yep, thank you, Peter. Again, this is a question for National Grid. I know the design usually comes after permits are issued by the town, typically for something like this.
Alright, anybody else with technical questions? Mr. Cohen, please rise, use the microphone if you can. State your name and precinct number, please.
Robert Cohen, Precinct 5. Mark, when you overload a transformer, you know what happens? It explodes. Believe me, 50 years, I've been doing small and large of this too. And your engineer should have come back from the utility company.
Is there a question here, Mr. Cohen?
Yes. Who took the readings of the power coming in and the power going out? And what's the future of power gonna go into this transformer? And does this control our pumping station?
Can we answer that?
Yeah, the only part of that question I can answer that's, that I know the answer to is the part that it does feed the pump station. All the other parts are really questions from National Grid and their engineers.
The problem here to the people here, if you underestimate the power coming in from that apartment...
Is this gonna be a question, Mr. Cohen?
It is a question. What happens if you overload the transformer? I just told you. It's gonna explode. The pumping stations don't work. And you know what happens when you're pumping sewage out? I don't have to tell you. A big lawsuit to the Towne Stoughton. I could see that one coming.
Okay, I don't know if that was in the form of a question, but, you know, we'll just move on. Anybody else with technical questions? Mr., no, we're gonna, Mr. Vindresko, you already had yours. Okay, we're moving on to Pro and Con Debate. Anybody from Pro and Con Debate? Please rise, use the microphone. State your name and precinct number, please. Mr. Vindresko.
I don't want to kill this project because the person has a lot of money invested. But why can't they, the feed that's feeding the transformer that feeds the pump station, why can't they go across Atkinson Ave, hook into the power lines and run it underground, a separate line that doesn't attach to our...
That's a question. This is Pro and Con Debate.
Well, okay, it's, I'm giving you, I'm giving it a way out.
Alright, thank you, but do you have any other comment?
That's the comment. I'm giving you a answer to get out.
Okay, we'll make, we'll turn into a comment.
Go to the main line on Atkinson Ave and bypass our transformer. And that way there, there's no, there's no way anything's gonna happen to our transformer.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Cohen? Please identify yourself when you get to the microphone.
Robert Cohen, Precinct 5. Vote this article down. If they were so concerned, Utility, Boston over Edison, whatever utility we have here, they should have been here answering these questions, not the town engineer. Their engineers. They're not here. Tell them to come here and get this passed. I ask you to vote this down.
Alright, next up. Mr. Bellevue, please identify yourself.
Paul Bellevue, Precinct 3. Basically, the article is just for an easement. The other things that have come up about the electrical, et cetera, et cetera, really isn't an issue here, but obviously, we should just vote the easement down, let the electrical company come back in, and we can ask them the further questions, so. I mean, I move to end comment.
No, no, you either do one or the other.
Move to end comments.
No, you already made your statement. Thank you. You want to talk? Okay, Mr. Hanson?
In view of the fact that there's so much controversy about this public service company or whatever they are...
Please identify yourself.
Elliot Hanson, Precinct 1.
Thank you.
I suggest we vote it down and have them come back and give, answer the questions that we have.
Okay, Mr. Murphy? Scott's gonna be, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Carrara for a comment.
Just to add some information to this, this doesn't just happen on a whim. The guy walks in with a roll of plans about this big. There's a sheet for every part of that project, right down to the power grid, how it's gonna come in. I'd like to see the sheet that was submitted and pass that planning board, which way they were actually gonna come in, because they don't have to run 35 poles. Alls they gotta do is get across the street, sink it in the ground, come down that pole, run up the shoulder of the road, into the... come down that pole, run up the shoulder of the road into their project, not across the town line, down through their whole property. So when the guy goes out to put in an irrigation or fix it, and all of a sudden he tears into that line and it shorts out our line, happens all the time. Ask Rosendies, K.I. Rosendies, they dropped the rake on the back of the bulldozer, the ripper, and he tore out an eight-inch gas line. This thing will come out of the ground like nothing. It's only in PVC pipe. And I can guarantee you, it's not gonna be cemented, the full line. It's just gonna come out of the power, run underground, run over to the other pedestal. We're not in the business of making it financially easy. We do enough of that for people. I've never seen National Grid step between a builder and the town of Stoughton. Never. It's, it's almost ridiculous. So I'm just telling you where we stand. You've heard other things, but I've seen power go down on the same thing. You're not to tap onto a pumping station power grid. It's foolish. Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Murphy, I recognize you. Question has been moved. Who's second in there? Bob Cohen. Two-thirds required, right? Okay, this, the cutoff debate requires two-thirds. I'm gonna ask for a voice vote. If it's not unanimous, we'll have to do the clickers. All those in favor of cutting off the bait, say aye. All those opposed, hearing none. All right. I declare that unanimous. All right, let's see if it's, would you like to do a summary? Nope. You're good? I'm just offering, just offering, just in case. All right, this is for the vote. Please, once it's up on the screen, are we ready? Please vote now, it requires two-thirds to pass. Yes, no, or abstain. Right, it doesn't pass. All right, Article Six fails. Yes was 43, no was 89, abstentions was three. That motion has failed. All right, moving over to Article Seven, in the middle of the page, page 19. That would be roadway paving. The motion by Juananokian, please, when you're ready.
That the town vote to appropriate $2,066,036 to resurface and repair several roadways, including utility upgrades and its applicable professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation, demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs. And to meet this appropriation, that the town authorized the treasure with the approval of the Select Board to borrow $2,066,036 and to issue bonds or notes therefore pursuant to Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority.
All right, I need a second. Seconded by Scott Carrara. Can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 14 to 0 to 0 to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article Seven as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Can I have the Municipal Operations report? Cynthia Walsh?
Municipal Operations voted 5 to 0 to recommend Article Seven to Town Meeting for approval.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. All right, for the presentation, Mr. Shifun, please identify yourself to the meeting. Mr. Star, first, we're gonna have the presentation, and I'll get right to you, sir, okay?
I'll stay here, is okay?
Sure, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Shifun, again, Public Works. So Town Meeting has been very gracious with this resurfacing program. So we're back again. I think that people like it. I think we've been successful. I think we've been aggressive. I think that we've, our subcontractor and our staff, with all the support, has, has done a very good job with this. And we hope to continue. We'd hope Town Meeting is gracious again to continue this. And I just wanna let people know that these, these roads that are to be paved on page 71, the list, the bottom right-hand box on that page, there's 28 new streets on here. There's 78 streets on the other boxes on this page that we've done. And 10, I'm sorry, yes, 78 we've done. Excuse me, 68 we've already completed in two years. 10 more, we've been approved, but we're waiting on underground utility work to be done, so we'll do those in the spring. And these ones, again, will have to do minimal underground utility work, but the majority of these will be completed in the construction season of 2025. And again, like we did last year. That's why we're here in the fall, so we can get a jump on that. And again, hope to get your support again.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Star, please identify yourself.
Edward Star, Precinct Six. Actually, this, this is like a blanket work order there to say, just, just go and pave any streets you want. I, I'd like to know which streets it involves. There's several, it could be 10 streets, it could be five streets. Does anybody know exactly?
Excuse me, excuse me. One, I don't wanna slam the gavel down, but Cynthia, let him ask his question. I know it's in the book, we'll get to that, okay? All right, Mr. Star, Paul Shifun will refer it to the book. What page is it on, Paul?
71 is the, is the list, like I say, on...
There's a list for Mr. Star.
Is that the list, okay, then we can go by that? Is that an exact street?
Those are the exact streets, sir, yes. And there are estimates from our subcontractor in there that are normally pretty accurate. On page 74.
Okay, the whole list is there, Mr. Star. He's referring. Thank you very much for your question. Elliot, you good? Anybody else for technical questions? Mr. Murphy, please rise, use the microphone. State your name and precinct number.
Peter Murphy, Precinct Two. When you do these streets over, are you also looking at the conditions of the sidewalks? If there are any? And if there aren't, are you adding any sidewalks?
Yes to all those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else? Eric Coleman, please identify yourself.
Eric Coleman, Precinct Five. What's the term of the bonds? How, how long are they for? Do we know? Short-term, long-term?
Anybody able to answer that?
All of the bonds are long-term. And they run, I believe it's 10 to 15 years for each. And the estimated cost per year, I believe, is $337,000 for each new bond that we pick up.
Thank you. Mr. Ventresko, you're up.
Yeah, Peter Ventresko, Precinct A. My question is, does this go out the bid to general contractors all over New England? Like the, the contractors' bible is the Dodge Construction Network. You subscribe to that, and it gives you every job in New England. In fact, you get jobs all over the country, but basically, everybody around here gets a New England edition. So on a, if this goes out the bid, you could probably have 10, 15 contractors bid on it, and that's how you get the cheaper price. So I don't understand...
I don't even know.
It's like the contractor here dictating what the price is.
Is there a question?
That's the question. Does it go out the bids? Yes or no?
Does it go out the bids?
The paving contract has, has been out the bid and awarded to the subcontractor with, who provided the estimate?
It went out the bid, and where was it, where was it advertised?
I'm sorry, I can't...
Where was it advertised?
Honestly, I'm not sure where it's advertised.
Don't say the Patriot Ledger.
Lenham?
Is it my turn?
Okay, hang on. Mr. Ventresko, you asked a question, give him a chance to answer. Go ahead, Paul.
I'm not sure where they're advertised. That's up to our procurement department. I know that everything that we do is subject to mass procurement laws and advertising requirements and, and all of the stuff that has to happen.
Can I keep going or I gotta come back?
Well, you have one more question?
Well, I got a lot of questions.
Well, you have one more question, yeah.
The reason why I'm asking, it was a little while back, a month ago, I saw something on the town's website. I forget what the job was. They put a job out, and they were gonna water somebody, and then they were told they have to advertise it. And the answer was, they advertised it in a penny saver. I don't know, any contractor runs out to buy the Patriot Ledger every day to see what jobs are coming up. And how, why is it, the reason why I don't think it was out the bids, as far back as I can remember, 25 years, it's always the same contractor, except for one time, we had a contractor 20 miles away from here that did the road surface in front of my house and back of my house. So I don't think this is really going out the bids so we get the best price. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to technical questions. Please identify yourself, Mr. Rock.
John Rock, Precinct Three. My question through you, Mr. Moderator, to Commissioner Paul. How, how do you determine what streets need to be paved? Are you on some kind of schedule where you do so many a year? And, and is there a lifespan to a paving? Are you gonna pave all the streets in the town? It's, you know, it's quite a bit of money, so... By the way, you did my street, looked nice.
We did.
John, I think I can help you with that. Uh, two questions. First of all, it's posted in the central register. That's where all construction contracts are leased out. Whether you continue this program is completely up to the members of Town Meeting, the representatives of Town Meeting. We can only put it forth as a proposal. Only this body can approve or disprove. I will say, though, it's been a long, long time before Stoughton took any action like this. But at any given time, this body can stop this program.
Okay, and what, what's the lifespan of a paved street?
Sure, so if you'll know, I'm sure you've noticed, most of these are neighborhood roads. So we're hoping to get 25, 30 years out of these streets. To answer your question, yeah, I do hope to pave every road in this town.
Okay, whether they need it or not?
What's that?
Well, thank you very much for answering my question.
I didn't hear one.
All right, thank you both. Next up, this is still technical questions. Lisa Lyons, please, identify yourself.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct Two. Hi, Paul. So just a quick question. Do we have a criteria, meaning that the road has to be of a certain level of bad? I don't know how else to say that, before we pave it? In other words, I'm looking not to pave a road that doesn't need to be paved. So I'm looking for the answer, what's the criteria?
Every four or five years or so, we refresh our pavement management plan. They give us an RSR rating, a road surface rating, that consists of no maintenance required, preventive maintenance, minor rehabilitation, and major rehabilitation. Throughout this program, we've mostly gone after the major rehab ones, of course, first. That being said, if there are other smaller side streets within the neighborhood that we can pick off that aren't too costly, that's the approach we've taken.
Okay, I, I like the idea that there's a major road repair. I'd like to stick to only doing roads that are major repair. Is that, yes?
Okay.
Is that possible to do that, to save some money for the town until it hits the most significant level?
It is possible. When I, when I say minor costs, I mean really minor costs in the grand scheme of things. We're not just gonna go out and pave a road just to pave the road.
Okay.
So yes, of course.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you both. Anybody else? Oh, first Peggy, I saw Peggy. Please, go ahead, Peggy, please identify yourself.
Peggy Su, Precinct Two. I wonder what qualifies for a speed table? I know the one on Wellness Street is working great. We could use one on Seva Street. We have speeders and children on that street, and it's very dangerous.
Okay, so, so the, the process with how that, those two speed tables, speed humps, got approved were the Select Board approved those to be done, then we, we got an estimated cost for what it would, what the impact would be financially? The decision was made to go to Town Meeting. Town Meeting voted on that. And now you have what you have.
It, it's really working well, and it would be great for Seva Street. I don't see this Seva Street on the book for being paved, and I wonder why. It's a very long street, a lot of use, and a lot of speeders and trucks trying to avoid other areas. So we really kinda have a problem there.
I would agree that, that the speed might be an issue as, in terms of the resurfacing. There are other, many other roads that need repairs more than Seva Street at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jim, can you identify yourself, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Garen, Precinct Six. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Paul Shifun. Will that $2,066,000 cover all of the, the roads on that list?
Yes.
My, my street went on that list in 2023. It's not yet paved. Prices go up every year. And if you got a, if you got a fixed, a fixed fee contract, there's gonna be a problem here, I think.
So...
Okay, go ahead, Paul.
Mr. Garen's list, excuse me, street will be paved in the spring. We just did the water mains on that, in that neighborhood. So the, the pricing, again, we bid these contracts, and the, the fix, the prices are fixed for, for the work. And those, and these roads are gonna be done in that construction season. I, I mean, we, somebody, a previous speaker asked a question about bidding and everything. Like, we bid the work, the prices are fixed, and we're gonna do it this season. That's it. The, to the answer to the question is, yes, this will cover the cost of all those roads.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you both. Okay, anybody else? We have someone else? Marina, please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you very much, Marina Ryans, Precinct Seven. So we just, I wanna ask you if, for the next time, for the same type of projects, if we could get actual pictures of how the roads look, so we can, we can compare. So for us, what we have right now is just difficult for us to determine whether, you know... It's not that I don't trust you, but is it possible to have a clear picture how the roads look and why these roads, but in particular, need to be paved?
I'm sorry, man, photos of the roads, is that what you asked?
I just wanted to see if next, you can, next time, add more clear pictures of every road, how they look, you know, and why you, you know, decide to pave these particular roads. Because right now, it's difficult for us to, to see why all these roads need to be paved. So is it, is it, can you add more clear pictures, actual pictures? You know, any holes in the roads, why they look so bad, and why you determined to pave these particular roads this time?
I think we can do that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Next up, please identify yourself.
Rodney Bender, Precinct Six. I live on a road where Columbia Gas, prior to them, whatever, being decommissioned, dug up the street in order to replace the gas lines. Excuse me. That was never repaired, even though I've submitted it to the town on the website and all that jazz. And I'm wondering, a broader question, what responsibility do the utility companies that dig up the roads sometimes after they're repaired? What responsibility, what type of clawback, if you will, can be put upon them?
Okay.
It's a little bit outside the scope on this question.
That's okay. Did, sir, did you say that the trench was not repaired, the work was not repaired? I just wanna...
Yes, it happens, it happens all over the place. I mean, I'm in Boston all the time as well, and it happens there. So I'm just wondering, is there a type of clawback or a way that they could compensate the town once they dig something up and now the town has to pay for it? the town once they dig something up and now the town has to pay for it to repair it?
We've actually had utility companies come back two, three, four times because we're dissatisfied with trenches. So that happens more than you would think, too. Where are you talking about, sir, where the, the gas company didn't repair the road?
Hillwood Avenue. I wish I had a picture.
Okay.
You can, you can start at, I forget the cross street, but they were doing water work, your department did water work on the beginning of the street, and they didn't continue to repair the rest of the street that needs repair. That Columbia Gas, once again, dug up to repair the gas lines.
Mr. Moderator, I would just ask the gentleman, if he can call, we can have a conversation on the side. I don't, not, not that we don't want to get it resolved, but.
Understood. Mr. Moderator, just for a point of clarification. My street, that's fine, is not that important. It's a broader question of townwide. If a utility company digs up a street once it's repaired, what responsibility do they have financially to repair that or compensate the town for the repair?
Okay, it is outside the scope. I'll allow that to be answered. Mr. Crowe, would you like to, if it's okay?
Digs up the street once it's repaired? I don't, I don't. So if we pave the street and then there's a gas leak, is that?
No, Paul, if they put the blocks down and build a road between the line?
Yeah?
Do they have responsibility to repair the street?
Oh.
I think Mr. Crowe can answer the question, if that's okay, Paul. Go ahead, Mr. Crowe.
You guys listening? Being whereas the Board of Selectmen, our street and water sewer commissioners, this problem, sometimes it comes to a head. Gas company opens up every street, they're going to go from Seva Street, then they're going to go over here, they're going to go over there. We get calls at our houses, hey, what's going on with our street? And I know Peter Ventresco remembers Canton Street was like a bomb shelter from the gas company, and they weren't fixing things, and they were doing temporary patches with the, with, with Easy Out Top. And what we said was, we're shutting down all your street openings. Fix Canton Street, then you can go to the next street. They didn't, they, they thought we were kidding. And the board, when I was on there, we shut them down. And that's the strength that the Board of Selectmen has. So if somebody has a problem like that, you come to the board and we'll address it, the same way we're addressing the poles, the double poles on the side of the road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crowe. Okay, any other technical questions? We're getting behind a little bit. All right, seeing now, let's move into pro and con debate. Mr. Cohen? Oh, I'm sorry, were you up before?
No.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, why don't you rise? This is pro and con debate. Yes. Please identify yourself into the microphone, please.
My name is Bob Cohen from precinct five, and I was one of the agitators that started this. Looking at the conditions of the road in Stoughton, it was a disgrace. I started with the previous public work. Mr. Jaffoon, I followed him around in his car. We rode around and checked these streets, and it was disgraceful. And when he, and by the way, I had Mr. Jito on my street, and he could agree that that street was an even bigger disgrace. So I continued to haunt Mr. Jaffoon, and they came here and asked for $2 million two years ago, and they got it. They're asking for more this year. We're going to do this for a few more years because the conditions, the state gives us 700,000, 800,000, it doesn't put a dent in anything, and we don't get our roads fixed. And if you drive around Stoughton, you'll find some of these roads are deplorable. And I agree that they should continue this as long as we can afford it and get these roads fixed. They're only going to get worse, and it costs more to fix when they get worse. So I highly support this and hope you do, continue this project so we can get our streets looking like streets, not like K-Ben riding on. Your car will never last in this town, I promise you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, Dave Lurie, please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Lurie, precinct six. I'm very much in favor of this article. I was from the very beginning, I still am. I think everybody's comments are well taken about like overdoing, you know, the projects where the cost is getting big. There is a different cost to take into account. There's a trade-off if you don't do it. We all drive cars. We know what happens to our cars when we're hitting potholes and whatnot. We don't want to end up having to cut off our nose to spite our face and then having our cars go bad, and then you're having to replace your car because it took a beating on your roads. And at least you're also getting a nicer image in your town because you've got beautiful roads. People from the outside coming in say, hey, this might be a town I like because they take care of their roads. I'm in favor of this article for those reasons.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, Mr. John Inzirino, please identify yourself, please.
John Inzirino, precinct four. I just want to say I'm in favor of this. I applaud Mr. Jaffoon for bringing this up earlier, when he started this, to come in at a special and ask for the money so they could get into the construction season, starting in the spring instead of having to wait until the winter, and then you couldn't do the roads. So I urge you all to approve this and keep, keep this program moving. It's working very well. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Ventresco, please.
Peter Ventresco, precinct eight. I'm not against roads being fixed or sewers or water system going in, but there's usually a procedure. All the years I worked in construction, when a town wants sewer or water on roads, they went to the Dodge Bulletin and sewer contractors put the bid in it. So you've got to get the same quality of work at a cheaper price. That's, that's my main concern. You get the job done at a lower cost, and I don't think we are. And I don't know where this fixed cost comes from. Where's this fixed cost come from? To you, Mr. Moderator.
No questions at this point in time. We, we already went to the technical question period. This is your summary or your debate. Thank you very much, Mr. Ventresco. Next up, Cynthia Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Move the question.
Second by Scott Carrara. The cutoff debate, that means the cutoff debate. Yeah, we already have a second. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All right, the cutoff debate, we need a two-thirds majority by voice vote. If it's not clear in the mind of this moderator, we'll have to take a count. So vote by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. I declare that a vote, unanimous vote, the cutoff debate. All right, would you like to do a summary, Mr. Jaffoon?
Very briefly. We do get the best pricing because we bid the work. We bid the work for the, for a paving subcontractor every year and/or renewal for another year after that. So we do get the best pricing because it goes out to bid legally and as per mass general laws. That being said, I, the only thing I'd like to say is, like some previous speakers said, please continue to support the program and hopefully your, your road's on the list, and if not, someday soon it will be, hopefully.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. All right, I think we're ready to vote. This takes two-thirds to pass because we're doing a borrowing. Are we ready? Okay, stand by. All right, screen is back up. All right, we, are we voting already? I guess we're voting. So please continue the vote. All right, we, we have eight seconds left. If you haven't voted, please vote. If you have voted, thank you for your vote. It's, it's, there's a problem? Are you people saying there's a problem with the voting? It's live voting. Could, are we good? Okay, I'm told this is the vote. Okay, so the vote is over now. Thank you all for voting.
Thank you.
Announce the vote in one second. All right, to announce the vote, obviously Article VII roadway paving does pass with a clear two-thirds majority, 123 yes, eight no, one abstentions. Declare that a vote. All right, moving on. Next page, page 20, Article VIII. This is the adopted GL, chapter 44, section 28 CF. All right, Mr. KB, when you're ready, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I vote, I move the town vote to accept the provisions of general law, chapter 40, sections 42A through 42F, and general law, chapter 83, sections 16A through 16F, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Who seconded? Carolyn Campbell. For the record, Carolyn Campbell seconded that motion. Can I get the finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted 14 to zero to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article VIII as written in the warrant.
Okay, municipal regs?
Municipal regulations.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you like to? Okay, I apologize, the chair is right, I know you're very proud, Sarah. Would you like to, be handed a microphone?
Thank you.
That's John Rock, everybody.
John Rock, Municipal Regulations Chair. The committee voted nine to zero to recommend Article VIII to town meeting for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Appreciate that. Thank you, Kamel, for willing to assist. All right, the presentation. Who do we have here?
I can speak to it.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Please identify yourself to the meeting.
Elizabeth Sleski, Finance Director. And the purpose of this article is, a few years back, you had voted to put liens on people when the trash bills aren't being paid. So what happened was, it was a defective article at that time because we found that when we went to put trash liens on, we have 1,200 accounts at the time that were in deficit or to be leaned, each one of those was going to cost us $104. So by changing this total article here, what it will do is, there will just be one fee to file for all the liens, which will be split into people's accounts. So it's just saving the taxpayers' money for those who haven't paid their bills, saving the town money, and just making our liens a little bit more clear for trash liens.
Thank you, Elizabeth. All right, time for technical questions. Anybody have a question? No, anybody seeing now, we're going to move on. No one? All right, pro and con debate? Anybody? Let me just clarify, clarification from town council. Okay, this is a simple majority. Are we ready to vote? Please vote now. All right, Article VIII passes, 127 yes, three no, one abstentions. Say to clear that a vote and moving on. Article nine. It's on the middle of page 20. Mr. KB, when you're ready, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept the provisions of chapter 653, section 40 of the Acts of 1989 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Who seconded? I'll take Bob Cohen for that one. Finance committee report, please?
Finance committee voted six to eight to zero to accept and recommend to town meeting Article nine as written in the warrant. The motion failed.
Okay, next up, Municipal Regulations, Mr. Rock. Where are you?
Municipal Regulations voted nine zero to recommend Article nine to town meeting for approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, the presentation. My business, who's doing it?
I can do the presentation. I'll be doing this for the Director of Assessing.
Okay, thank you.
Quite simply, it is chapter 653 allows for the lien date for improvements and new construction to be June 30th instead of July 1st of any year. We can collect more revenue this way, allowing maximizing new growth tracking, and new growth is crucial to our tax levy and budgeting processes.
Okay, thank you very much, Elizabeth. All right, this is the time for technical questions. Anybody have any technical questions? Mr. Delinsky, please identify yourself.
I think I'm George Delinsky, precinct two. And reading this thing and looking at this thing, this Act of 40, the Acts of 1989, it was acted in 1990 some odd, we're like 30 some odd years behind the time. How come? Why haven't we done this before? If this is that important about collecting revenues, I don't understand the delay.
That is a question cannot be answered at this time because none of us were here in 1989. I don't know why it didn't occur.
It's a little shocking to see that we could have been having some additional revenue in the town a lot easier, and I commend whoever found this thing for finding it, and hopefully we do pass this thing and we're going to collect some money on this.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Anybody else, technical questions?
I'm, I'll defer to Dave Lurie.
Mr. Lurie?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dave Lurie, precinct six. I have an opposite question. Why is it so important to pass this now if we waited since 1989 that we can't do it during the annual town meeting?
Because the effective date of liens changes based on this. So we would do liens, new construction to be June 30th instead of January 1st. January 1st is quickly approaching. So that is why the need is to vote this at this special town meeting and not at the annual. It's being financially prudent for the community.
Thank you. Lisa Lyons, please identify yourself.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So my concern with this article is that we're always talking about bringing new business into the town. And while new business is trying to get themselves on solid ground, and we've been able to, it's not like we're not going to get the revenue, my concern is that let, it's attracting new business to the town by not having this in place, and it will not prevent us from getting revenue. So my question is, is why don't we just leave it the way it is? We'll get the money and further because we don't have enough financial policies in place to put guardrails on with spending all this money, and I would prefer to have that in place first.
Mr. Calder?
Mr. Moderator, I've heard that argument a few times. Let's not collect money, we may spend it. Town meeting spends the money, not the town manager, not the select board, not the finance committee, town meeting. Not a dollar has been spent in the three years, two and a half years I've been here without the approval of this body. If we wait another six months, we've got the largest industrial site being built right now in Stoughton. What we're talking about is putting off, even though the developers incorporate this money, because 330 something other towns in Massachusetts do exactly what we're asking Stoughton to do. So developers incorporate this money into their construction budget. The question is, do they keep it? Pocket it? Or do the taxpayers, the residents of Stoughton deserve that money by us entering the 21st century with this policy? I've heard it argued so many times that our taxpayers can't afford it. Why would we pass up this opportunity to collect money that developers have got built into their budgets? Please, let's join the 21st century.
So my second question is, it's not, it is not a matter of why wouldn't we collect the money. It's a matter of we have no guardrails in place or savings in place to put that money.
It's called town meeting.
Okay, first of all, no cross debate. Lisa, are you having a question here?
Well, I was trying to ask the question.
All right, ask it. Please kind of get to the question.
Okay, so the question, the question is, should we have a policy that would say, hey, based on our budget, we're going to put X amount or percentage in the capital plans, then I wouldn't be so objectionable. wouldn't be so objectionable to something like this? But town meeting has not been cognizant of the savings that would help all taxpayers alike, and that is my concern here. Are you not concerned about that?
Mr. Moderator, in the FY twenty-six budget that will be put forth before this body in the spring, there is money being deposited into stabilization accounts, into savings accounts, into deferred money, for that very reason, when we bring this budget before the Finance Committee, the gentle lady will learn that we do have a policy and that there are guardrails, and I really resent that this narrative is being spread.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Mr. Feinberg, you're on the list.
Thank you, Arnie Feinberg, Precinct Six, through the moderator. If this does pass, when do you start collecting the taxes from the new businesses?
According to the data that's being provided, it will start new construction by June thirty instead of January first. So we would not be putting anybody into lien status, they would be deferred, so revenue would start collecting officially based on this coming January forward. That's when we start calculating our new growth. So any new growth would be falling into the twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven years, not in twenty twenty-five. However, if we do not pass this now, we will be deferring any and all revenues and potential revenues to this community who is in dire need of the money for another year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me rephrase that question. I meant that in reference to when the new business starts their first shovel full of dirt. When does that happen? When do you start taxing the business?
It has to be a percentage complete in accordance to the law, and I believe you'll find the law in your book. So I'll have to just, yeah, if you, if you look at the book under the article, you will find the law. I believe this is Article nine, and this is an IGR that was written by the Division of Local Services in March of nineteen ninety. So if you read the law, you will have a better understanding of how this works and when it works. We don't write laws, we're here to institute a law for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Am I allowed one more?
I think you asked two questions already. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Next up is, I believe, Kim, could you identify yourself?
Hi, Kim Leonard, Precinct One. I just wanted to know if there was any insight into why it failed with the Finance Committee?
You have to kind of...
I just was wondering if there was any insight into why it failed with the Finance Committee?
Oh, you mean the two?
Yeah. It was a six-eight. Six-eight, zero.
Yeah, do we have an answer? Do we know that, Mr. Noke?
Could you repeat the question?
I just was wondering if there's any insight into why it failed with the Finance Committee?
Why I believe it failed at the Finance Committee? I don't know exactly why everyone, you know, who voted no would vote no. I know there was a lot of discussion that day, there was concern from some members about taxing projects before they were complete, before a business or developer could start making money, they would have to start paying the tax. That was some of the discussion in regards to that.
Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, Mr. Hanson.
Elliot Hanson, Precinct One. To answer sort of the previous person's question, I was on the Finance Committee at that time, and I voted against this. My concern was that if you start taxing a project, we'll see that big building downtown that's finally, finally getting worked on, but if you have a project like that, who assesses how far along you are before you start collecting taxes? And if there's some financial difficulties, you're gonna add to that potentially, and so you could end up with incomplete projects because the economy, something took a dive, but you're still gonna get the taxes, so now you're taxing the one-third of a project built. I kind of, if you could tell me how that is not going to happen?
All construction would be part of a, it's part of the permitting process, so as a permit is being completed in the construction phases, we know whether or not we're at ten percent, twenty percent, fifty percent, and that is how it will happen. However, as far as a project going out of business, it's not necessarily gonna be on taxation, it's gonna be on form management by the company.
Mr. Moderator, I believe.
Well, we do have a few other people. Elliot, you completed your questions?
I have, but Joe Scardino may be able to answer that question.
No, no, no. You have a question? Okay, but you're in line. No, no, Mr. Hanson, hold on, hold on, hold on. Moderator determined, we'll ask the town for the answers first.
Okay.
All right. Can anybody from the town answer that question? Do you want it repeated? Can you repeat your question?
The question I think was, how is it assessed? And you gave me some assessment, I just want to know how that was done.
And I did, I did answer that question, Mr. Moderator, it's all based on permits and percentage complete via the permitting process.
Okay, thank you very much, Biz.
You're welcome.
Okay, it was asked and answered.
Now, can I give him the mic?
Uh, no, no, you can't. Please bring the microphone back to the stand for the time being. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Scardino, you're on the list, so. Next up is Peter Ventresco, please identify yourself.
Yeah, my question is, this is gonna affect the homeowner besides. If somebody's building a new home, and it's not finished in that timeframe, he's gonna get charged for a full year on a finished project, which it's not. So I think it's putting a bigger burden on the average person, and I don't think it's fair, I should think it stays where it was, because in the past, if you were building a house and it wasn't finished...
Is there a question?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to see if you...
I don't think that this should pass, because I don't care about the business, because they get all kinds of money, but the average person can't afford a home because of all these regulations we're putting on. Now, this is another way to pick their pocket six months earlier. Leave it the way it is, so if the house is only partially finished, they're gonna pay for partial, partial home, not a full tax on a full finished home. Thank you.
Okay, I was waiting for a question, Sarah, but that's okay. We're moving on. All right, yep. Next up is Paul Demuse.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. I had the same question. Would, if you wanted to put an in-law apartment on your house for your elderly parents, you're gonna have to start paying property taxes on percentage of completion of that. To me, that's a money grab, but if you could just answer that.
If I may, I'm going to defer that question to Town Council, however, I do believe that this is on commercial industrial properties and residential property, not on residential. But I defer that question to Town Council.
Okay, give Town Council a moment here.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, I don't see any indication in the statute or the IGR that it exempts any particular classification of property. It's, seems to be construction that becomes part of the real estate during the period from January first to June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. All right, moving on, next up is Marina Ryaz. Did I pronounce your last name correct?
Yes, thank you very much. Marina Ryaz, Precinct Seven. Don't you agree that it will be improper to tax business before it produces revenue? My concern is that it's gonna turn a lot of businesses away from Stoughton, which will affect our growth and our revenue going forward.
Would anybody be able to answer that? Oh, could you repeat that, Marina? Could you repeat that question, please?
Do you think it's improper to tax business or a project before it's complete and produces revenue? I'm concerned that it's gonna turn a lot of businesses away from Stoughton, and will affect our revenue going forward.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, go ahead.
I thank you for that question. Again, the first question asked us this evening is, why haven't we done this since nineteen eighty-nine? Almost every other town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, of the three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, I don't know the exact number, so please don't quote me, have been doing this since the year it was enacted by the Massachusetts Legislature. It's a home rule petition, we don't have to do it. But if they're going to move from us, because we're doing it, there aren't many places in Massachusetts they can go, because most places in Massachusetts, this is their policy. We spoke earlier about policy. It's up to the town meeting body. As a matter of policy, do we want to be consistent with other state, other towns, cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? If not, that's okay too. We're not trying to gouge anybody, we're not trying to overtax anybody, but again, the pertinent question is, why haven't we done this since nineteen eighty-nine? It gives relief. The project that's being built that Mr. McCrisky led the way is a million square feet. They're already out of the ground, and by January first, we can tax them at a fifty percent rate. I'll bet you that income is worth more than every new house that's gonna be built in the town of Stoughton in the next twelve months. So the question is, do we want to provide relief to the residents of Stoughton? I hear it every night on Facebook about the residents of Stoughton. This helps the residents of Stoughton.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, second question. What's the percentage of our budget goes to stabilization fund? And if we have any policies, that would be nice to look at.
I don't understand the question myself.
I didn't understand the question.
One more time the question, please?
Yes, what's the percent of the budget goes to stabilization fund?
What percent of the budget goes into the stabilization fund?
Into stabilization, yes.
That is not pertinent to this question.
It's really beyond the scope of the question, Marina? Okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you for your question, though. All right, Mr. Scardino's up next. Is that working? It's not on yet. Is it on? You got the green light, but there's no... Okay, there it goes. You're on, Joe.
Joe Scardino.
Not loud enough. Try again. Go on.
Joe Scardino, Precinct One. I heard some questions earlier on. I want to raise this question. The percentage completion, isn't that the end of the jurisdiction of the assessor? To go out and examine a building and determine the percentage of completion on January one?
Yes, but it's also determined on the building permits and how the building permits have been signed off. So if we're so far with, let's say we've got the sheetrock up, we've got the wiring up. I'm not a building inspector, I'm not a permit person, but the, the assessor does follow up to ensure that the, that the permits are being followed, et cetera.
My follow-up question is, I'm concerned about negating or cutting into the discretion of the assessor, who may, in his eyes or her eyes, determine the project as being seventy percent completed, and therefore tax revenues would come in even sooner. I won't, I don't want a statute saying that he can't assess it seventy percent. If he or she sees, and their eyes, and I was familiar with a couple of projects when I was in the planning board, that with the right type of assessor, you'll get a much more favorable return on an assessor on a large project like the town manager's talking about, with a lot of, if not just the assessor, but a private consulting company coming out and looking at that project and saying, you know, there's economic value in excess of fifty percent. And so I'm concerned about putting a statute in place that, for want of a better description, to emasculate an aggressive assessor. I can't put it any more succinctly, because I've seen it done, and, and we did, we went in money out very well.
What's a, okay, let her answer the question.
Okay, so quite simply, we cannot start an assessment until it's reached a minimum of fifty percent. So it, if it's seventy, eighty, ninety percent after January first, that's what we assess that. This article has been put in by the Board of Assessors on their recommendation, yes, they are in charge of the assessments, not town meeting, but the assessing department themselves, it's their responsibility. But we cannot start until we reach fifty percent.
And you're saying that the permits determine whether it's at fifty percent?
They, they work, they work together. When a permit is completed, they go out and they inspect projects all the time. We're still inspecting things now that are gonna affect new growth for next year. So yes, the assessor goes out, the hands are not tied, and the final outcome is up to them.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you both. A gentleman in the back room, could you identify yourself, please?
Yep, Phil Connor, Precinct Two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, can you just, can anyone help me understand how many towns or cities in Massachusetts do and do not utilize this law?
Oh, hang on there, see if we can answer it.
Gentlemen, if a gentleman over there can speak to that, that'd be very helpful. Absolutely.
Mr. Lanahan, can you help us out a little bit?
Thank you, sir.
Please identify yourself. Not working yet.
John Lanahan, Precinct One. I just looked it up, and as of last May, it was two hundred and seven of three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns that have it in place.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lanahan, appreciate the information. All set. Okay, next up, Paul Bellview.
Paul Belliveau, Precinct Three. The way it exists right now, is, is the potential for someone to have a house partially built and just never finish it, or whatever, and never, we never assess taxes on that? Is that how it works in the present situation?
If it's not fifty percent, we cannot assess.
But under our present guidelines, if he was seventy percent complete, oh, ninety percent complete, we still wouldn't assess.
Under the current guidelines, no. But there would be an assessment for the land value, but not the building value.
Right, so, I mean, the trick has been done previously, and this is why the law was created, people would start construction, and, you know, okay, I'll leave the, outside my house, you know, and, and all of a sudden, they're not paying tax.
Well, it's like someone who doesn't complete the project, they haven't gotten their occupancy permit, so that's not considered a hundred percent complete, but it could be ninety-nine percent complete.
So that's why I would recommend.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else with technical questions? Jim, Darren? Can I just make a quick announcement? If you're leaving for the evening, please turn in your clickers. I've seen some people exit, I'm not sure if they're just going down the hallway or coming back, but if anybody has more than one clicker, please bring the other clicker down front, turn it in, please. Nobody should have more than one clicker. Just a reminder, thank you. Mr. Jim, please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Darren, Precinct Six. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to whoever can answer it. Is this ethical to introduce a new rule on taxation in the middle of a project? A project, where you have a million square foot project going now, is this ethical to throw this on them? Maybe they came to Stoughton because we didn't have this.
Mr. Calder, if you can answer that.
Generally, I'm not sure I know the ethical answer to that question. As much as I would say that, as we know, in over two hundred cities and towns, it is the bylaw. We, we don't want to discourage growth in Stoughton in many areas, okay? I can tell you when the logistics park was being built, which is a million square feet, it'll be our largest taxpayer in Massachusetts. If Mr. McCrisky were here, he would tell you, they never asked the question about what our policy was, because they build these all over the country and all over the state. So I don't know the answer, the direct answer to your question, I know that they never asked the question. We met, Mr. Tisdale and I met with a developer today, a very large developer, today. They had a dozen questions. They'd never asked about this policy of when does taxation begin. It wasn't on their list of questions.
As Mr. Lanahan just threw, he could have looked up online and selected Stoughton because they didn't have this policy, which is where my ethical question comes in now. Can we... Can we throw this on him after his project is started?
Can we defer the town council on that one?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. I can't address, I think, the question you're asking in terms of ethics, because the state law that Town Meeting is asked to adopt or not applies when the town adopts it, and it can be adopted at any time. There's always a continuum of construction occurring in any city or town. At any time of the year, there are houses being built, there are plazas being built, and so on and so forth. And so whatever time you pick to adopt a statute like this, there's always going to be people on one side of that line and people on the other side of that line. And so that's no more true today than it would be true in 1989 or any other time a town would take up a question like this. So it's not particular to any project when any town takes this under consideration. It's more of an abstract question. And using a project as an example of whether or not to adopt it now or not now, this could have been adopted at any other town meeting over the last several decades. And it would have had the same effect on any construction.
All right, I don't like the answer, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Can we move on to, what's that? We've got a phone con debate? Yes. You have one, okay. And you have one too, Mr. Scardino.
Okay. David Lurie, Precinct 6. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the body. I'm totally against this article for many reasons. Think about how old, we're about to have our 300th anniversary as a town. Just in the time that I started at Town Meeting, just 13 some odd years ago, we went from a $95 million budget to a $131 million budget. It's almost like a 25% increase in our budget. Now, it doesn't have anything to do with who happens to be the town manager or the select board today. I'm hard-pressed to find anything close to the level of new services coming to me personally because of all this new growth that comes into this town. We are swimming in money, and we don't get new services as a result of it. So to think that we must grab this money because it's going to be good for the town, I differ with that, 100% against that thought. Those people who are looking at putting those budgets together, starting now, they're doing their budgets now. They hand a budget off to the select board. The select board says, oh, so that's how much money it costs to run the town. Okay, let's send it to the Finance Committee. By then, these things are burned into those departments as the new growth plus the regular taxes that come into the town. That's how it's done. We might be able to do a little bit of, like, around the edges, tweaking the budget during this, you know, what do we got? We're going to completely rip out, what is it? $3 to $5 million worth of new growth because of this logistics park? I don't think so. We might take, you know, a few thousand here and a few thousand there, but certainly not millions, and we don't get the result. And the reason is, is because we're void of any policies that protect the town from that happening. If we had guardrails and we had policies, not guidance letters to a select board that says, oh, that sounds good this year, let's do that. I'm talking about permanent policies that you get reported on year over year.
Mr. Lurie, let's please stick to the article.
It is the article because...
No, you're not.
It is the article. It is the article.
It is the article.
It is the article, because when you have policies already, this could wait until the spring, after we get this Collins Center report, and then we could talk about it in the spring. It's certainly after, since 1989. Doesn't need to be here today. So I beg you not to let this happen. If they want to bring it back in the spring, after they show us what the policies are, so that the new money that comes rolling in, at least we know we could at least divert some of it towards things that do give us new services, or it does positive things for some of the construction that we need done. It's not going to happen. It goes into a black hole. If you let this go through, all that new growth that comes in, it's going to hit that budget, and you're not going to be able to pull it out. It gets trapped inside those departments. That's what happens. So please vote no, let them bring it back in the spring. As a matter of fact, they should withdraw before it even goes through a vote. If they withdraw, then maybe it comes back without any bias or prejudice, and then they could bring it back.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lurie, your time's up. Thank you very much. Mr. Scardino, you're up next.
Joe Scardino, Precinct 1. I wanted to address the comments of Mr. Garen. I just, and bring it to the body's attention, that there is a legal remedy for anyone who feels they're aggrieved by this policy in an overly aggressive fashion, and it's called the abatement process. And any business, including the one that the manager has talked about, could apply for an abatement if he feels that they're not at 50%. And I won't tell you that it's an easy process, but it is a legal process that can happen outside of the town with the Interpol Tax Board. So the concern, if you're going to vote no for the ethics of it, I just wanted to bring up to the body that there is this legal process that's been there for God knows how long in the Commonwealth to address a grievance in your tax assessment, whether you're a business or a house.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
We're still on, I can have you summarize at the end, sir. I'll have you summarize at the end.
I just thought after that speech, you deserved a recourse.
Next up is Lisa Lyons, please.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. So the budget is absolutely related to this article. When you're talking about revenue, you're talking about how revenue is generated in order to make all these expenditures. Town Meeting has been warned for decades now, so has the Select Board for decades now, that we need written policies that carry from year to year.
Ms. Lyons, are you talking about Article 9?
I 100% am, because it's revenue, as revenue fits in the overall budget.
Revenue could be anything. I want you to focus more on this chapter 653. Are you for it or against it?
That is, I am against this until we have written fiscal policies. The town manager recently just said that the Select Board gave fiscal policies to put money in the stabilization fund. So I am asking, this is money that would be addressed in that bucket. So this money would become part of the revenue that ends up in that bucket. So the question is, is what is the, the thought I have, because we're not in a question, is what percentage of our overall budget that is coming from a revenue sheet is what percentage is going into stabilization funds that will actually benefit the taxpayers? Because that's what this is all about. We were just told this particular article would benefit the taxpayers.
We're not talking, wait a minute, let me stop you there. We're not talking about stabilization funds right now.
It is all related.
Excuse me, ma'am. All we're talking about is whether this town should adopt this provision in the state law. That's all we're talking about.
That's the problem, and why Stoughton is in the position.
We're not talking about that.
Because we're not allowed to discuss how it all...
Excuse me. Let me kind of redirect you a little bit. We're talking about this Article 9. Not about stabilization funds, not about town policies. We're talking about, and everybody else that wants to speak, please stay focused on this article.
This article relates to revenue, correct?
It does relate.
Are we talking about revenue? Through you, with our respect, are we talking about raising revenue here?
I don't want to argue back and forth.
I'm not trying to argue.
Either you focus on this article, or I'm going to ask you to sit down.
I'm focused on the revenue of this article and how it fits into our overall budget.
Didn't talk about the percentages that they talked about.
We can say we have policies through you, Mr. Moderator, but we actually don't.
The policies, I'm not talking, excuse me, excuse me. Everybody just calm down, let's take a breath for a minute, okay? We're going through the process. I redirected the speaker, now we're moving on. Thank you all for your attention to the matter. Next up is Mr. DeMuse.
Paul DeMuse, Precinct 2. I'm against this article. My understanding from what the town attorney said that your home is not exempt from this, you want to put an addition on. I would think that, you know, sometimes you get some money, you build, you put the foundation in, you do a little more, you do a little more over time. Using the logistics park as an example, is all big money, we can't miss this money. And it affects actually a lot more than just big business and developers. And there's smaller developers too, that work on a very tight budget, that something like this could make or break a project. So like I said, I'm against this, and I think it is just another money grab.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, Carolyn Campbell.
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct 4. First of all, I'm in favor of this article. We have, a lot of people have been concerned about developers not, you know, how fair is it to the developers? There've been plenty of public hearings on this article, no developers shown up. The only people that have spoken against it are some of the people that have spoken here that were on the Finance Committee. So, and in their case, they are concerned about us getting revenue, and they are concerned us about not having revenue. And I don't necessarily know what exactly their ultimate agenda is.
Okay, let's focus in on this article.
But I would not let their arguments dissuade you as to how you should vote on this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Mr. Feinberg, you're over here.
Arnie Feinberg, Precinct 6. I encourage you to vote no, number one. The fact that we don't have this tax encourages businesses to come in, and we don't have to do what every other town has been doing. We can attract that extra business. Second of all, I agree with the gentleman who previously just spoke about building residential construction, and I think that's going to be a burden on the people building their houses or the construction company doing it. Please vote no on this.
All right, moving right along, Marina Riots.
Thank you. I'm voting against this article for a few reasons. Just imagine, it's not easy to build a business here, to build a business, period. And people usually accumulate a lot of debts, they take out a loan, they have a lot of expenditures, and for some unforeseeable reasons, they can't finish the project on time, or it takes a little bit more time for them to complete it, and they are being taxed. It's just going to completely kill the businesses. Let's think about that, and we don't need to repeat other towns, which is going to be, this town, smart, intelligent people, and we need extra revenue, we need businesses, we need growth. So I'm voting against it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have on the list, next up, Mr. Enzavino. Sorry, Molly, you're kind of after...
I'd let it go ahead of me, just a... John Enzavino, Precinct 4. First of all, I'm in favor of the article. If you look at the backup material for this article, it carries the statute. It explains when it can be done, how it's done. It's not, I don't believe it's a big inconvenience. Anybody doing construction would go through their budgetary process with a pro forma, how they're going to spend money and when, and they would know this is coming. I don't think it's a big inconvenience. I don't think it's going to prevent any business from moving into town, and I don't think it's going to prevent anybody from putting an addition on their house or from bringing a business into town. It's something that's just part of doing business, they'll understand that. I don't see it as a big hindrance. So I urge you to vote for this. And I'll just throw this out in case people are just wondering. Look at the Board of Selectmen's agenda for October 15th, and on that agenda was all the guidelines that were given for doing their budget, just in case you were wondering. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. John Roth.
Hi, John Roth, Precinct 3. I'm in favor of this article. Just think of all the revenue we foregone since 1989. Maybe we wouldn't have had to raise trash rates, water and sewer, et cetera. If the Finance Committee wants to put some guardrails on this money, they can vote to put it in various stabilization funds to help with future town projects. I think the burden of this will fall on commercial development. I don't think it'll impede anybody from moving here, and I don't think we should repeat the mistake of not voting this in, considering how much money we've lost since 1989. So I'm in favor of this. I hope you'll vote in favor of it too. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, I have on the list, next up, Cynthia Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct 3. Move the question.
All right, I need someone for the second. John Walsh, I think you were louder. All right, you have that for the record, John Walsh is the second. Okay, this will cut off debate, I need to, we're going to do voice vote. Has to be a clear, two-thirds majority. All right, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
No.
All right, I think I only heard one.
I have a point of personal privilege.
Not right now, sir, excuse me, we're in a vote. All right, any abstentions here and none? I declare that a vote.
All right, I have a point of personal privilege I'd like to ask.
Well, what's a point of personal privilege?
The point of personal privilege is, there was a reference that there was an agenda by the people on the Finance Committee, and I do have an agenda, and I did vote no. The agenda was to look out for the taxpayers so that they got an impact from the revenue that does come in.
Okay.
That's the agenda. It was quoted, I wonder what the agenda was, and I wanted to answer. I want the previous speaker...
Come on, we have civility here.
The previous speaker now knows, now knows.
Mr. Lurie, I'm on a bouillabaisse order right now. Thank you. All right, we just took a vote, cut off debate. Do we want to do a summary? Excuse me.
Mr. Moderator. Since you gave the previous gentleman 15 minutes to give a long speech tearing down your town government, I have one...
I didn't give 10...
I have one second.
Mr. Carter, let me be clear.
Yes, sir.
No one had 15 minutes. I'm using, we're using Apple products. If Apple's bad, call them up and tell them their phone...
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, you want to do a summary?
Thank you so much. It's up to you, folks. You are the legislative body for the town of Stoughton. You decide how every dollar is going to be spent. For the previous speaker to suggest for one single moment that when we raise money, you spend it, poof, into the air. Those are his and her expressions. I find that disgraceful. You give your time and your talents to town government to be its legislative body. By the way, the FinCom for which these three people speak from, and I exclude the chairman, voted for the budget the last three years. Now they want to say money just goes, poof, into thin air. It's a narrative that will tear this town apartment apart, just like the last election on both sides tore this government apart.
We're not going to go talk about elections.
I'll wrap up by saying, I hope you support this. We hear every day that we need new revenue to support our citizens and take money off the tax burden. That's what this is about. It's amazing to me the way the prior speakers argue it both ways.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, it's time to vote.
How many votes to pass, Mr. Moderator?
It's a simple majority, correct? Simple majority. All right, let me know when it's ready. All right, we're ready to vote. Please vote now, one, two, or three. Want to come down here, John, and we can... We have a couple of clickers with problems? Okay, let me announce that vote, that's Article 9. We had to adjust the vote upwards. It is 109 yes, 28 no, one abstention. All right, because two clickers didn't count. So one minute, please. So Article 9 passes with a simple majority. Excuse me? Okay, I can repeat the number. I adjusted the vote upwards because two clickers weren't counting in this calculation here. So 107 plus two, anybody want to... So, 107 plus two, anybody wanna help me? 109, thank you, 109, I don't mean to be too facetious, but 109 yes, 28 no, one abstention. Thank you, you're welcome, sir. Yes. I just wanna give you a technical announcement. If your clicker shows a circle in it, it means it's just polling. It's still working. It's still polling. It's still working. It's not polling, but it's working. Okay. Is there an indication when it's not working? If you have an X on your clicker, that means it's not working. Is that clear? Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on. I know sometimes we get a little hostile here, but you know, we're still all neighbors, we're still working within the same town, within the same community. So let's move on to Article 10. This is construction of Halloran Multi-Sport Arena supplemental funding. And Article 10, I'm gonna have the motion asked, Mr. Varnenokian from FinCom.
That the town vote pursuant to General Law Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance the sum of $164,000 to supplement this $300,000 granted under Article 25 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting for Funding the Construction of a Multi-Sport Arena on Pierce Street on Assessors Map 066, Lot 030. This article is exempt from the Sunset Bylaw, Article 70 of May 2023.
Okay, who seconded it? Elliot Hanson? Elliot Hanson seconded that. Okay, can I have the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted 12 to 2 to 0 to accept and recommend Town Meeting Article 10 as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Municipal Operations, please.
Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Three. Municipal Operations voted 5 to 0 to recommend Article 10 to Town Meeting for approval.
Thank you. It looks like we have a Community Preservation Committee report here. Anybody from CPC here would like to read that? Mike, come on down. Mr. Murphy? Point of interest, I haven't heard that one before, but what's your point? Let me just have a point here.
Technicality. On this here, it says, this is excluded from the Sunset Clause of 20.
23?
Of, yeah, of 22.
Well, this says 23.
Okay, 23. But we actually closed that one out, so I'm not sure.
All right.
If I may speak to this article, Mr. Moderator.
Here's, go right ahead.
To the members of the body, Elizabeth Sleski, Finance Director. This is based on the original motion for this, which was in, we had to make this exempt, Article 70 of May 2023. The reason that we had to make it exempt is we are going to be hitting that deadline by June, and it's gonna take a little bit longer to do the construction on this, and that's why we exempted it.
No, but what I'm saying is Sunset 2.0, we actually got rid of that, so.
Well, we exempted it from the May of '23, which is exempted. Tonight, we did the Bylaw 2.0, but we still had to put in the language that.
Either way, it's exempt, I get it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you both. Mike, could you identify yourself, please?
Michael Barrett, I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And the motion, the Community Preservation Committee voted 5, 0 to 1 to recommend Article 10. And just to add to that last point, yes, that last piece regarding the Bylaw is a moot point after tonight's vote, but when the article was presented, we didn't know where that vote was going, so we did include the language for that reason.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it. All right, we're ready for the presentation. Matt, could you identify yourself to the body, please?
Yep, Matt Koschan, Recreation Director. So in front of you is the Halloran Park Multi-Sport Court Supplemental Funding. This project came before this body, spring of 2022, was voted favorably by this body. Since then, we've had unexpected delays in the permitting and design process. Unfortunately, when we did go out to bid, bids came in higher than expected due to the last couple of years of high inflation escalation in the construction world. All the permitting and design is completed, so I believe this is what they call a shovel-ready project. We, I then got a state grant from Representative Ted Phillips for $25,000 that will help reduce this cost from the CPA. Again, this project is expanding the basketball court at Halloran Park. We'd be replacing it with two post-tension concrete courts. These courts, they have a higher upfront cost to build, but in the long term, they actually save the town money because they're supposed to last at least 20 years, whereas regular asphalt courts are within 10 years. And there's gonna be a lot less downtime due to maintenance because of that concrete. Many, many communities are going this route of the post-tension. These courts will be surrounded by street hockey boards to give it that multi-sport court feel. These courts are used every day through basketball, street hockey, I see kids learning how to ride bikes. We have a senior fitness class that uses these courts all the time for those fitness programs, two days a week. So these are truly multi-use courts in at Halloran Park, so they are open to the public. Nothing in this project has changed since this body last voted on it. It is the same project. We just unfortunately need more funding. I am lucky to be working with a really good engineer and procurement department. We were able to go to bid and have that bid held contingent on Town Meeting approval for tonight, so we do have a very reputable bidder that we can sign on with if this does pass tonight, and they did come in under budget, and they come very highly recommended as well. So that is all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt. All right, time for technical questions. Any technical questions from the body here? Ed Quigley, please rise and use the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Ed Quigley, Precinct Two. First, I'm in favor of the project. I have a question. Will the location of the new construction be bounded by the existing sidewalks in that area? So it's expanding toward Lee Street rather than into the park?
Correct, into Lee Street where that dead grass spaces.
Okay, so the sidewalk that goes around the?
That won't be affected. The walking track with the lights won't be affected.
And the one that goes from Lee Street into the walking track stays the same as well?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Elliot Hanson?
Elliot Hanson, Precinct One, is this thing working?
Try it out. Yeah, you're all set.
Seems to be working, no?
Yeah, it's working. Just turn it towards you a little more.
All right. I don't see up here how much we're going to approve. I see a supplement, but I have no idea what the number is.
Yes, from the CPA, be 164,400.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, technical questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move on, Pro and Con Debate, anybody? Seeing none, we're gonna move on. All right, would you like to do a summary, Matt? No summary needed, thank you very much. All right, this is a simple majority. Are we ready for the clickers? Okay, please vote now. Simple majority.
Thank you all.
Okay, anybody have a problem with their clicker? You're supposed to come up front if you have a problem with your clicker. You have a problem with your clicker? Well, come on down front, that's all I'm saying. Are we good? I think the vote's in. Article 10 passes, yes, 113, no, 12, one abstention. Motion passes by a clear majority. Thank you all for voting. Okay, we're moving on. Article 11, that appears on page 22. 22 in your books. Recreation conservation restriction for the Glen Echo Recreation Area. Page 22. All right, I gotta ask Mr. Varnenokian for the motion, please.
That the town vote pursuant to General Law Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund undesignated fund balance the sum of $30,000 for the establishment of a perpetual conservation restriction on a 6.7 acre portion of land, more or less, currently owned by the Town of Stoughton, which includes portions of Assessors Map Number 70, Parcels 104, 128, and 129, and portions of Assessors Map Number 82, Parcel 34, and also that the Select Board be authorized to grant said conservation restriction in said parcel of land, meeting the requirements of General Law Chapter 44B, Section 12, and General Law Chapter 184, Section 31 through 33, and to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary to effect said establishment, including all incidental and related expenses. This article is exempt from the Sunset Bylaw, Article 70 of May 2023.
All right, I need a second. Seconded by Elliot Hanson. Okay, this is Article 11. Presentation by the CPC, could you identify yourself, please?
Michael Barrett.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I don't think I read the.
We didn't do the votes.
Reports.
Okay.
Sorry.
Finance Committee voted 13 to 1 to 0 to accept and to recommend to Town Meeting Article 11 as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Municipal Operations, please.
Municipal Operations voted 5 to 0 to recommend Article 11 to Town Meeting for approval.
Thank you. And we have Mr. John Rock for Municipal Regulations.
I think he stepped out, but I can read that one.
Kamel, go ahead, please.
Municipal Regulations voted 9 to 0 to recommend Article 11 to Town Meeting for approval.
Thank you. And could we have the CPC Committee report, since it's on the?
Okay, again, it's Michael Barrett, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And the Community Preservation Committee voted 6 to nothing to recommend Article 11.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, you're the presenter, Michael.
Well, okay, I'm just gonna introduce Barry Kassler, our Program Administrator, who's gonna run through the article. One thing I did wanna say upfront, though, with it is, this is kind of a housekeeping. The Glen Echo acquisition was approved back in 2011. As part of some of the cleanup of the town's books that we heard about earlier tonight, we had a conversation with Biz that told us that the money that we thought was sitting out there waiting to pay for the restriction, that is a requirement of the CPA legislation, was no longer available to us. So rather than go through a whole hodgepodge, we said, you know what? We'll just throw an article in here. We estimated $30,000. Quick background, about $1,002,000 was the total acquisition and closing cost of the property. In the ensuing years, we spent about $22,000 to have the property surveyed and to have a restriction put in place on the open space portion of the property. That restriction does not apply to the six or seven acres of recreation space. Town is still upgraded to go ahead and find somebody and put that restriction in place. We just wanted to make sure there was money available from the CPA, which, my opinion, is a much better funding source here than the general fund. With that, I will let Mr. Kassler, our expert, explain what the restriction is and how it works.
Thank you, Michael. Barry Kassler, Program Administrator for the Community Preservation Committee. As Michael explained so well, the background here, it's kind of a housekeeping article. Any property that's purchased using CPA funds is required to have a permanent restriction on it, and the rest of the property that is outside this 6.7 acres already has an open space conservation restriction. This is the active or passive recreation area in the middle of it. It also needs its own conservation restriction. So we placed this article in the warrant for the reasons Michael stated, that we had thought the funds were there, but they aren't available. The funds have reverted back into the, not into the general fund, but into the CPA fund. So they're still available, just not for this project. And as Michael said, the town is required to implement a conservation restriction on this. And if this article is approved, then the cost will be borne by the CPA fund, which I believe is the appropriate fund to carry that cost. If you don't approve it, it will have to be paid out of the general fund. In any case, it does have to be done, and I think it's a better idea to have the CPA fund pay for it.
Thank you, Barry. Okay, this is a time for technical questions. Anybody have any technical questions? Mr. Juan Fox, please identify yourself.
Juan Fox, Precinct One. In the grant wording, and the items that are approved are not prohibited, it shows courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, playgrounds. The neighbors in the Glen Echo neighborhood are having a lot of heartburn about that wording. And the concern is, is that in the future, this will allow those courts to be built. Now, I had conversation, email conversation with Mr. Kassler, and he stated that it's, the disc golf is whatsoever, what's being thought to be done. Is there any way to change the prohibited side, or the accepted side, to remove the courts? The basketball court, of course, because it's also in the prohibited side, but the, all the other courts and playground, or the court-like things that would give people problems?
Right. Yes, thank you, Juan. As you mentioned, the plan is to put in disc golf, which is played with frisbees, which is a really minimally invasive activity. You don't really have to cut down trees to do it. It's not a particularly noisy sport. In putting together the conservation restriction, the idea was to not, to exclude too many things off the top of the bat. I notice, for example, that, well, first of all, what you're looking at in the warrant, in the backup information, that's actually just a draft. That is not set in stone. So any of that can be changed. And that, the Recreation Department, through Matt, will administer that. So if anybody has any really strong feelings about excluding certain activities, that can certainly be done. This particular article is not to endorse that draft. This article is just to fund the conservation restriction and pay someone to hold it, in whatever form it finally takes.
So could the, the neighbors of Glen Echo contact you and state that they really don't like that and should please, you know, remove that from that part of the article?
Yeah. They can do that.
Okay, thank you. We're still in the technical question period. Anybody else have any technical questions? Seeing none, now we're gonna move right into Pro and Con Debate. Anybody have any Pro and Con Debate? Seeing none, we're gonna go right, if you'd like to do a summary?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very, oh, Michael, did you wanna do a quick summary?
Oh, wait. One quick thing I would like to add on that note. Dating back to 2011, when this acquisition was approved, there was, I believe, a lot of conversation about open space and recreation, which is why the six acres were copped out, so that this was not strictly an open space proposition, that we did allow for recreation. And it's in the conversation that we had, that you saw the template that's out there, that certainly we welcome the feedback in terms of those uses. And it'll come back through the CPC and or through Matt and the recreation. But again, I think this is a pretty straightforward housekeeping thing, that we are, as residents of Stoughton, we're all better off if we take the CPC money to fund this recreation restriction. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Michael. Okay, are we ready with the clickers, with the vote? Okay, we're ready to vote? Please vote. It's a simple majority. Please vote, one, two, or three. All right, Article Eleven, motion passes. One twenty-five, yes, two no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. We're moving on. Article Twelve, FAA lease agreement. That appears on top of the page. Yes?
Point of procedure?
I recommend, please state your name and your point of procedure.
Ryan Holmes, Precinct Three. We're on Article Eleven now, is that right?
We just finished Eleven. We're on Article Twelve.
So we're on Twelve. And we're kind of really close to getting this all done tonight. So I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the rules prohibiting new business after ten-thirty to finish this whole thing tonight. I love you all. I just don't want to come back Wednesday, you know?
All right, motion's been made to suspend the rules. I need a two-thirds vote. Who seconded that, by the way? Lou Gieto did? Okay, Lou took the second on that. No debate on this. Okay, this is two-thirds. I need a clear majority in my ear. Otherwise, I'll have to, have to use the clickers. All right, all of us in favor to suspend the rules, say aye.
Aye!
All those oppose?
No!
I think the noes have it.
I tried.
Okay, thank you. All right, we, any challenge to that, to the moderator? Anybody want to challenge the moderator? Hearing none, we're moving on. Article Twelve, lease agreement, which appears on the top of page twenty-three. For the motion, Mr. Cavey, when you're ready, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Twelve, I moved that the town vote to approve Article Twelve as printed in the warrant.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Thank you, Carolyn. All right, can I have the Finance Committee report? Mr. Nokian?
Finance Committee voted thirteen to zero to one to accept and recommend to Town Meeting Article Twelve as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Intergovernmental Relations, Kamel.
Intergovernmental Relations voted five to zero to recommend Article Twelve to Town Meeting for approval.
Okay, time for the presentation. Mr. Town Council, please identify yourself, please.
Calling my own number on this one.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the meeting, and very briefly, this is a lease renewal. This facility already exists at Five-O-One West, some navigation technology. And we were approached by the federal government, the FAA, to renew the lease. It's twenty-year terms, or requires a Town Meeting vote, but given the fact that this is with the US government, we don't have a lot of options here to negotiate with them. It exists already. It's been in place. It's operated under an existing lease. That term's just expiring, so they approached us to renew it for a new term of twenty years. Your bylaws require that we bring it back to Town Meeting for its approval because it's an over, excuse me, it's over a three-year term. So that's why it's on the warrant for tonight, for Town Meeting vote, to authorize that lease agreement with the FAA.
Thank you, sir. Okay, time for technical questions. Anybody with a technical question that would like to rise and... Okay, I see a couple people. I'm sorry. Oh, Mr., I'm sorry, I didn't look to my right. I apologize.
Thank you. I was invisible for a while.
Okay, but now you're not.
Thank you.
That's right.
Edward Starr, Precinct Six. Please be advised that the FCC, Federal Communication Commission, should be advised on this, as well as the FAA should take that into consideration to interference with electronic equipment in our area.
Okay. Are you questioning the interference? Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Noted. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else over here to the left? Mr. Fox?
Juan Fox, Precinct One. How much money are we getting from the FAA for this?
Can anybody answer that?
This is not the type of lease agreement that we get payment for. The federal government can actually do the lease agreement by, I believe, eminent domain. Is that correct? Or another federal avenue, Mr. Counsel?
If, Mr. Moderator, if the question's being referred to me?
Yes, deferring to...
The lease doesn't provide any financial terms. We don't get compensated for it, and our bargaining power is a little bit less than it usually is in these situations, because if we say no, they have the ability to just take it. So they, if you're familiar with the concept of supremacy, we get to take private property as the government. In this case, they're the government, and we're the property owner. So they have the ability to do that to us the way sometimes a municipality does it for, like a public works project. So there's no financial terms associated with this.
So my second question, what are our costs for having that there?
Can anybody answer that one?
There are no costs.
Mr. Tisdale?
I can, I can get a little more into detail on that one. This structure, there's already a structure there. This is, they call it an automarker. It gives planes traveling to know where to airport, bearing in distance of where they're traveling. There's already a building there. There's actually a map in your backup material that shows it. And there's a fence around the building, and then like a radio tower near the building to transmit signals. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it's been there. We've, it's a renewal of its existing lease. I'm going to refer to Brian as a comment.
Mr. Town Council?
Just to add on to Mr. Tisdale's comment, we don't operate it. We don't maintain it. We don't do anything to it. It's their property. It's just located on our land. But we are not responsible for ending it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have technical questions? Anybody else going once, going twice? Okay, moving on to pro and con debate. Anybody? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go right to vote. Unless the, any need for a summary this evening? I don't see any. Okay, we're good for a vote. This is simple majority, I believe. Simple majority. Are we ready to go? We're ready. Please vote now. One, two, or three. Simple majority. All right, Article Twelve, the FAA lease agreement passes by a clear majority. One twenty-one, yes, two no, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. All right, what time we have here? You still good? Should we do one more, everybody? I hear a lot of noes. If we don't, I need a motion. Please use the microphone. Let them use the microphone for us. Identify yourself.
George Stolinski, Precinct Two. I make a motion. We adjourn this evening and reconvene on Wednesday night at seven o'clock.
Same location.
Same location.
Seconded by John Rock. All in favor by voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? I believe it's close to unanimous.
Refreshments will be served at a later date.
All right, thank you, George. Everybody have a great evening. See you back Wednesday evening. Have a good night.